Welcome to the September 8, 2020 School Board Meeting of the Shorewood School District. Happy first day of school. I wanted to say a couple of words about the agenda. There are three opportunities for public comments and the first one is coming up very quickly. So if you have a comment that you'd like to share with the board, please do so at that time. And I just said this before we were recording that my goal is to be done by 10:00 PM. So I will be doing some time checks at different points of the meeting to make sure we're getting, moving forward. And I think that's it. I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. Our first agenda item is to adopt the agenda, so I will take a motion.
Clark, so moved.
From one of my school. Thank you.
Second.
Okay. Any changes to the agenda or amendments?
I would like to move from Section 9 under Board Governance, the Legislative Advocacy Ad hoc Work Group to our next meeting.
Okay. Any discussion on that? No? Okay. Any, alright, so I will, so we have a motion in a second. I will take a new motion with the amendment.
I move to a job agenda as amended.
Thanks. Thanks, Emily. Alright. Any further discussion? No? Alright, in favor? Hillary?
Hi.
Pablo?
Hi.
Clark?
Hi.
Emily?
Hi.
And I from Paru. Great. Dr. Davis, can you remind us of our overarching result for the school district?
Yes, our overarching result for the school district of Shorewood is our students are leaders who challenge themselves to grow and achieve academically, pursue their passions, navigate change, learn continuously, and contribute to the common good.
Thanks. Awards and recognitions tonight.
Yeah, so first of all, I just wanted to recognize, as was brought up already, the first day of school today and just really want to thank our teachers, all of our staff, students and families for a great first day. We know this is certainly a very unique time for all of us, but for the most part went off successfully. So I just want to say thank you for everybody's patience and persistence moving through this first day. And we're going to have a great school year this year. Want to acknowledge a couple of special recognitions for staff members that we recognized that are back to school, time together with staff a couple of weeks ago. We have our celebration of our 25th anniversaries in the district. So we had Bodan Nadelski and Eric Gitsen, who both received their 25 years, 25-year anniversaries in the district. So I just really want to congratulate both of them for their continued service at an extremely high level for our system. So thank you to those two. And athletics, I just want to say congratulations to the student athletes who have started out in our fall sports season, which will be limited, but nonetheless has begun. We have boys and girls cross-country, girls tennis, girls swim, and boys and girls volleyball, which started today. So I just wish them best of luck on the upcoming seasons. And that is all for our awards and recognitions for tonight.
Thanks. On behalf of the board, we also want to welcome and thank all the returning teachers and new teachers. It was really, I'm sure for you guys as well, sad not to be part of the Welcome Back Breakfast this year. I hope all of you had a donut together somewhere. But thank you for all your, for all the returning teachers, for all the work you did, and tell the new teachers, welcome. Excited to start this new school year with you. Okay, so up first, or up next then is public comments, number one. And so if you're interested in making a comment, I would ask that you unmute yourself. Please state your name and address and make your comment. Okay, I'm gonna assume that nobody has a comment yet. There'll be another opportunity. I'm going to guess in about an hour, maybe an hour and a half. Alright, so we have three superintendent's action agenda items tonight. I will take a motion for the first one, Approval of Monitoring Report for Operational Expectation for Personnel Administration.
So moved.
Thanks, Pablo. And I'll take a second. I'll second. Hillary? Thanks, Hillary. Alright, so I'd like us to do two things as we look at these monitoring reports. One is to, we need to first think about the report as written and our acceptance or not acceptance of this report. And then if there's things that we want to consider and start and talk about in terms of changes for next time around, we can do that afterwards. So do, does anybody have questions for Brian? Yeah, Emily?
My internet was going outright as you asked for the motion. And so I missed, are we, is the motion to accept this as in compliance with noted exceptions?
Yes. Oh, sorry, did you have a question?
Hearing for Brian first?
No, do you have questions?
I do. I get, well, I guess I'm struggling to understand how this is compliant with exceptions, given the volume of things that are non-compliant. So, I mean, I guess we could take each non-compliant issue at a time, but that, I guess, is the overarching question for me.
Yeah, I guess I would note too that I saw many that were not in compliance and most of them were due to things that were out of our control. And I might be conflating reports, but due to COVID and the early pivot that we made in March. So that for me kind of settles why there are, why it's compliant with exceptions.
Yeah, and just as I look at it, I look at, again, the each point. So for example, looking at, I guess, starting from the, starting from the top as you're looking at 4.1. And so there's multiple indicators, like it's 4.1 has one, but for many of the points, there's indicators, multiple indicators that will be under each one. And so what I look at is being able to be compliant, compliant with exceptions or not compliant within each one of those points. So 4.1, 4.2, 4.3, and then just look at the aggregate of those and then make a determination of whether, whether or not, you know, from, it's my perspective, our staff perspective, whether we were compliant, compliant with noted exceptions or not in compliance. So that's, just so you have an idea of how we would, how we would take a look at it.
You know, the following one where there's facilities reports where we just don't have the information available because of a reporting issue like that. That makes sense to me. Where we have set indicators, so the first one is we're not compliant in terms of the demographic racial makeup of staff versus the student body. We did set that high bar, but it's not an insignificant indicator and nor is it really just a technicality. If it's, if it's not in control of a superintendent, it shouldn't be on the report, but it is. The other issue that's pretty significant is the retention. So that would be under indicator five, being non-compliant. I'm not sure if there's an issue there that's, you know, outside of the district's control, if that really was, you know, COVID-related resignations. So, but to me, that doesn't seem insignificant or, or sort of, you know, a technicality. I did have a clarifying question and then one metric that said that our new HR manager was going to start tracking something. It didn't sound like we actually, I'm sorry, I'm scrolling up too. It's 4.6 board indicator two, the job descriptions being reviewed every three years. And it said the HR manager is going to do that, but it doesn't appear that, like, I was unclear on whether we actually are compliant or not.
Yeah, so we would, we would be in the three-year cycle. So the jobs that we have, we have reviewed some of those. So I would say we haven't made it through a three-year, we haven't completed a three-year cycle with that. So that, that's something we'd set out to do. But at this point, we haven't completed that, haven't completed a three-year cycle of that, I would say.
So I guess I want to, wait. Oh, I am unmuted. I guess what I would say about the racial makeup of the staff and the gender makeup of the staff indicators is that we knew that those were going to be, to me, those were aspirational goals when we set those. Because to go from, you know, essentially a 70% white staff to, what would we need to be at? I'm sorry, a 95% white staff to down to 70%? When we set that goal, we knew that that was, no, I, it was probably not something that maybe any of us will see while our kids are in Shorewood. So it was never set to be something that, that we knew we would attain. And then I guess when we set these, you know, years ago, we knew we would be non-compliant. But it's also important, from our perspective at that time as a board, to be very clear about that is something that we want to see happen and that we're tracking those numbers over time. And so, yes, it is within, you know, the superintendent's control in terms of, and the district's control in terms of hiring. But, I mean, that, that change is probab, I mean, we could have said on, it's probably unattainable in a short amount of time and definitely within any particular year. So to your point, Emily, maybe we should change what the metric is moving forward. And instead of saying what we want the absolute number to be, talk about changes over time or the direction of the change or something like that. Because, like I said, I think, given the fact that we have teachers who were lucky enough to stay for long periods of time, that's a huge shift that would take, that's not going to happen in a year. And we knew that when we set that goal. And to your point about the, I actually had a question about the, let's see if I can find it now. I guess it's board indicator five under OE8 about the retention data. I think one of the things that we are going to need to, we should talk about is, to your point, like, we need to, I guess, have a better sense of like what some of those, like when unknown is 12, you know, that's hard. So I think, again, we need to think through like what we want to see there. And again, I don't remember where 98% came from either, honestly, given that there's plenty of school districts right now that are seeing 65, 70% retention. I don't know where we got that number, so I think we should probably have a discussion about that.
I don't know. It feels like it's a pretty generous metric, but I guess that depends on how we're counting the 12 unknowns. Is that against our?
That's against, that's considered people leaving, right? I guess we don't know if they're retirements or family reasons. We, I guess, that's the only, so, I mean, those are, I think, to me, those are things that we should talk about as a board, about things that we're not getting what we want from this. Not necessarily, so that was my point about thinking about what's presented here as what was asked last year versus what we want to see change.
Can I ask you a clarifying question? I'm going to stick around a little bit, back to 4.6 when Hillary was asking about the HR management, the job descriptions. Brian, just clarify your answer. Were you saying that we're, we haven't gone through a three-year cycle since we put this indicator in place?
For the, for the job descriptions.
Yeah, okay. Okay. I had a similar question to that.
Yeah, it's a work in progress.
Okay, so the new, and the new HR manageable responsible for getting us through this. Are we in, what year are we in within that cycle?
Oh, I definitely go back and look, I think.
Two or three, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That'll be, oh, go ahead.
No, go ahead, sorry.
No, I was going to say that, that'll be, that'll be one of the things. I mean, I'm meeting with, with Kim, she'll start on Monday. We'll go through this report. So anything that you have, you know, want clarifying, you know, anything clarified or some direction, you know, that can go directly to Kim in this position will be helpful for, you know, starting with onboarding on Monday.
Okay. And then to follow up on questions for 4.8, I think it was. This is the one that you just brought up. Yeah. Indicator five and indicator three, I had similar questions to the idea. And this is to your point about discussing, are we measuring the right thing or do we want to change how we're measuring it? But indicator five, in addition to, you know, the percentage of retention, I also, and I know, I think I brought this up last time, we talked about this one, but I need to understand better what highly effective is. And I think the last time, the last time we talked about it was basically we're, we're considering all of our staff as highly effective and we want to retain them. I mean, that's the goal. But I'm not sure if we can measure that if we, if highly effective is, is not very clear. Does that make sense? It's not possible to me for, for the entire staff to be highly effective, whether it's us, the administrative, administration or the staff, right? This is, no organization has 100% highly effective people. And to retain 98% of those, I think that's a great, that's a great aspiration. But I guess, I think we need to be clear. When we reevaluate this, I just ask that we be clear on what does, what do we mean by highly effective? How do we determine that, I guess? Is it based on the reviews that nobody's had any issues? So we want to make sure that we retain them?
Yeah, I think, I think the idea is retention of staff. So we didn't have a, we weren't looking, we weren't digging into evaluations specifically for the staff that we were retaining. The idea is that if, if staff were, were highly effective or effective or people that we wanted to retain, then those are the people that we had, and were able to retain them, those are the people that we counted, I think, versus the, you know, if we had non-renewals or performance concerns, you know, that type of thing. So, I mean, that, that could be a, that the language changed that we could, we could provide, so.
Yeah, I think, Clark, this is my recollection.
Like, we admit that we're not meeting a benchmark that we set. And, you know, whether something's aspirational or not, if we didn't hit it, we didn't hit it. And it was important enough that we put it in the report in my mind, like, if something really, you know, we just don't have the information, that makes sense. But I guess I'm concerned that we're not holding ourselves accountable as a district if we're not willing to find a report non-compliant. It's, I mean, I guess I don't see like the great harm that we sat ourselves. It's not like that means somebody gets fired. It's just owning that we fell short in a year for whatever the reasons were. So I guess my concern is like, when do we say we're non-compliant? If not now, like, and which of these measures is such insignificant enough that we're willing to just say, you know, we're compliant except for these ones that don't really matter to us? Because I think in terms of minority hiring, like, we've certainly heard from our students that that's really crucial. And there might be good reasons we're not hitting that mark, but I think we need to put on record that we're not.
I don't think anyone here disagrees with the value of that. In fact, that's my day job, is recruiting and students of color into teaching. I, I, I hear what you're saying. I also, just looking at this report from a broad perspective, I think if we're missing, or we're non-compliant in a couple of indicators, that doesn't mean the whole thing tanked. And I think this is, this is realistic. I also appreciate the aspirational language that we have in this. I think it's easy to, 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 to desire and want and all that, making it happen and recruiting and, and and, and maybe I come at it from a, a perspective where, where I'm in the, in trying to help my students get through the bureaucracy of higher education and get through all this. It's, it's, it's not just upon us. It's, 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 I don't want to remove the aspirational language in here. I also am not willing to say a whole report is non-compliant because of a few indicators, albeit very valid. And I would, you and I probably concur probably the most important indicators of this whole thing. I also see a 96% retention rate as something that few other districts can boast. We were just talking to a big district on the west side of town that has three kindergarten positions they have yet to fill on Friday. Turnover in other districts is significantly higher. So I don't want to, you know, shake a fist at our, even though we were, I mean, it's, the report is not compliant because we didn't hit the 98%, but we got 96. That's, that's not a, that's still a high bar. I had some questions about the report specifically, especially as we look, you know, towards moving forward. A couple of things, you know, 4.8, we were not compliant in terms of our pay and benefits for two categories, our teacher aides, which we've spoken of wanting to bring up to a minimum of, you know, $15 an hour with benefits, as well as our administrators, like at the school principal level, that we're, we're lagging behind our peers in terms of what we're offering them. And I'm just wondering, I guess my first question is what your thoughts are and what Roger's thoughts are in light of these difficult budgetary times of making those two things a reality so that we can move into compliance in terms of getting our aides, I don't even want to say a living wage because I don't know what $15 is. What your thoughts are on that, Brian?
Yeah, I, I would say it would be, you know, to continue to follow the path that we've talked about, taking a conservative approach to this year. But if we can get through, you know, get through the fall and get through, you know, maybe early, early winter, past the new year, and we can get a projection from the state, it looks like the tax for, tax collections from the state weren't as bad as, as we had originally thought. So if we can get some, a higher level of confidence that we're not going to have a budget repair bill, which it looks to be possible at this point, at least more than it was over the summer, then my recommendation would be then to go back and do some retro pay in particular areas that, once we would clear that hurdle, I think that would, that would include, include those two categories as priorities along with, along with our teaching staff, as we would look at that. But I'd, I'd be reluctant to do that prior to, prior to having some higher assurances that, that we're going to clear, you know, any budget repair bill that may come back. Even if we make it through the annual meeting, again, November 3rd was pretty large from an election standpoint. The concern is that, you know, we could make, make it through certifying the levy fine because there's not a willingness at the state level to make any changes prior to November 3rd. But after November 3rd, there could be a call for budget session or after the inaugurations, a call for budget session in January or February that could take not necessarily our per pupil aid, but looking at our categorical aid that we'd have, an area that could be vulnerable. I just want to make sure that we're not caught in that situation, where we're not able to balance the budget. But if we can get to a point where we believe that we can have that, that allocation per pupil, that we're not going to have a budget repair bill that's going to correct, need correction in this budget cycle, then I think it'd be wise to be able to come back and look at, look at these areas and, you know, make some improvements.
Can we make sure we bookmark that so we do come back, assuming things tilt in that direction so that, that we can revisit? You know, turning around and giving a boost or a bonus to those two categories, particularly the aides. And I don't know if anyone had other questions about 4.8. And it's not that we can't go back to it. I did have one other question. It can wait. It was about 4.9 evaluations, but I'm happy to wait.
Go ahead, Pablo. I think, I have some questions, but you can finish yours.
No, why don't you go ahead?
No, 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 because it's minor. Go ahead, you have the floor.
Alright. Thanks. So this, and I don't know if this question is probably more for Sam, but in terms of evaluations, one of the things that happened due to COVID was, and we're non-compliant on 4.9 evaluations, because we just didn't finish the school year as we had planned. We shifted into emergency mode. Now things have been well planned out. We've had, you know, now a month and a half to plan for, for the situation we're in. I guess my question is what plans are in place for evaluations this year of staff, of teachers particularly, so that we can keep up that, you know, that highly effective group of teachers we, we brag about?
Yeah, so we, we were able to finish up all the teacher evaluations last year. Support staff is what we came up short on from an evaluation standpoint. And we need to, to work through what our process is going to be. I think if you think about what our virtual space is, depending on how long we're in that space, certainly there's an ability for, you know, a principal to do some observations by joining a class, similar to, to like they would do if we're in person. We haven't had any definitive conversations with teachers at this point about exactly how that's going to look, just because of our uncertainties of the school year. So I think at the beginning of the year, we just want to make sure that we're supporting kids and getting staff what they need. And we can follow up with, with you on just our evaluation conversations. We haven't had those definitively at this point. So, but I, I can assure you that we will have those evaluations, whether, I mean, if we're in virtual all year, you know, we'll figure out a way to be able to provide that, provide those evaluations. So we want to make sure we're consistent and mostly because that's, that's what teachers, you know, have a right to, is to be able to get feedback on their performances, get opportunities to have those dialogues with their principals and with their directors to be able to improve their practice and, and show growth in, in all of their areas.
Thanks, Brian. That's it for me on this, I will.
Brian, I wanted to ask about the Brian, I wanted to ask about the percentage for the retention, just because the indicator, you know, excludes retirements and family reasons. So is that 96.4? Is that excluding the retirement and family reasons that are in the list of reasons why people left?
Yeah, I believe so. I'd have to go back and, go back and check. So Katie ran those numbers, so we can, I can go back and check for you.
I would be interested, just, you know, for future reports to get a year by year, I think, just, you know, reacknowledging that this year is, is perhaps unique as people looked at what their options were. So I think just for future reports, I would like to see a comparison.
Sure. And so just, sorry, just so unclear, just charting, so charting that out and getting like kind of a three-year rolling look at it?
Yeah, from my, from my opinion, yes. It just is helpful to know, you know, that yes, we sent the 98% high, but, and we, you know, have been close or meeting that. But I imagine in the years to come, we might have greater turnover because of what we're asking of our teachers and, and things. I also sort of am concerned, I don't know that I've gotten a report in all my years on the board that have had so many noncompliant or compliant with exceptions. And so I do think it begs the question, as Emily was trying to get to, where do we draw the line on saying the report is not compliant? We had written this report with a lot of high numbers, knowing that we weren't going to reach them, particularly in our staff recruitment numbers and those sorts of things. And that was to call those things on the table. But I think it reduces the effectiveness of these reports if we just go, eh, it was a tough year and eh, we set those as being aspirational. If we are not compliant, then I think we need to say we're not compliant and accept the report as not compliant. Just as a quick, you know, I think there are like 12 noncompliant or compliant with exception indicators in here. So to, for me, that's a, quite a few that I think changes how this report should be accepted by us and, and how we evaluate it, acknowledging that, you know, this, the year ended crazily and that there are things that we didn't succeed in. But to me, the fact that they're in this report indicate they're important. And so I just think we need to be mindful as a board as to what our actions are, that if we're just going to shrug our shoulders and say, eh, well, okay, you know, eh, we get it. But then not, not accept the report appropriately. I just think this becomes sort of a failure of, of the process. And so I, I guess I would sort of disagree on the, the certification of this report for the disposition of the board's vote.
And, and I'll, yeah, I'll need clarification on that also. So as I'm, as I'm looking at, the lens that I'm looking at it through, you know, i- if that's, it sounds like it's like, it's a shift from, I guess, what my perception of how we were evaluating these reports. Again, in looking at, zooming out to 4.1, 4.2, 4.3, and looking at those evaluations collectively, and not necessarily looking at each individual indicator and counting those up. So that's a, that ends up at a different, potentially a different process. So as long as I have clarification on that.
Yeah, I don't remember Peru, and correct me if I'm wrong, if we ever said, you know, if 80% of the report is compliant, or, you know, I don't, I don't know that we ever said as a board, we'll accept it at, you know.
No, I don't think we did, right? I mean, I think to your point, we haven't like ever, I mean, I, to me, like, I actually, it's, it's interesting that, Brian, you say that you don't look at the indicators because that's actually what I do look at in terms of the, like, the things that we're, you know, and then looking on balance. I don't know what, like, you know, there's not like some magic number I'm looking for, but, you know, to be mostly compliant versus, right? So compliant is, if I look at just the indicators, the modal category, fine. But what does that mean? I'm not sure. We never talked about that. And I'm, I guess I, you know, to both your suggestion and to Emily's suggestion, I'm not saying that that any of those indicators, if we put them on the, on that report, by no means are they not important to us. They are important to us. So, you know, I think, I, I think it's, it's interest, I guess I also think that compliant, you know, like as with my teacher hat on, you know, like compliant doesn't mean like you're 100%, like you're getting everything and it's perfect. Nor does compliant with exceptions mean that it's not that bad. So, I mean, I think that's also just an interpretation to me about what those words mean. Because, again, I think we, as a board, probably need to make that decision, kind of collectively around all monitoring reports about what that, what we're looking at and how we're going to, what metrics we want to look at to make that decision for ourselves. And maybe sometimes it's really easy, the noncompliant ones around the results policy last year were really easy because it was very obvious that we were noncompliant. And then there's been other ones that were very obviously, we were, everything was compliant. So, you know, I think it's in the middle that's more complicated, but I think that's probably a board discussion more globally. And so we can, we can go back and change, if we can take a different, we can either, somebody can make an amendment to the motion. Or we can vote on the current motion. I'm open to suggestions.
Just as a quick note, I think the last time that we had a noncompliant report, the real.
Cut out.
Tim Joynt to come back in a couple of months and give us like a plan to address the areas that we're noncompliant. I don't know if that's kind of what we would do in every case, but to me, if that's the only real implication, then that's fair. Like, if we just say, can you bring this back before another year has gone by? Like?
Even though, like, in this situation, I guess for me, like, the ones that are not compliant are not things that we're going to know within the school year.
Right.
So, right? So, again, it's more about,
Yeah.
I mean, to me, it's more about like the questions that we have and the things that we as a board want to see different, right? But, like, I think, like I said, this is more about like a, a, a conversation to me about like what those words even mean, right? Compliant versus compliant with exceptions, which maybe we need to have. So, like, that's an aside because we're not going to do that now. But, you know, like, I think that's, to me, like, you know, like, I, I guess I don't want to suggest that compliant with exceptions means we don't, we're not, we don't care about the ones that we didn't meet, or that we're kind of just shrugging them off, but that there is something to be said for ones where we, you know, like, the reason why we look at this, to me, in my mind, the reason why we look at this data every year, even though we know we're not going to be compliant around certain things, is to remind ourselves that we're not meeting our, what we want as a goal. So, so that was, I guess, the other point.
I do think that's an important conversation for us to have, though, that there is clarity of what those things mean, because not only from our perspective, but Brian's perspective as well. If we're looking at these things in two totally different ways, that does not for a good system make. So, yes, I understand what, what you're saying for this evening's report, but I do think moving forward, we need to have exceptional clarity as to what our expectations are, if it's compliance with noted exceptions or not in compliance. Because I don't want to be accepting these reports, you know, without the clear understanding that we all are on the same page with those terms. So, sorry, Clark.
No, I just wanted, from a, I stepped back a little bit while we were talking about this, and I was trying to count, count them up. The ones that were not, the indicators that were noncompliant versus compliant, and then the individual sections that were either compliant with exception or noncompliant totally. And I, when I first look at these, I look at the sections and say, is it compliant, noncompliant, or compliant with exceptions or noncompliant? And then I do look at the indicators like Peru said as well. And actually, if my quick calculation is correct, more than a third of the individual, if we were to bunch these all together rather than break them up into sections, more than a third of the indicators were noncompliant. And then if we do it by section, more than a third of the sections were at least compliant with exception. One was noncompliant, three were compliant with exceptions. So I guess I'm kind of, I was leaning towards what Hillary and Emily were saying is, is, to me, from, I look at it from that objective standpoint, it sounds like it's not, at least in this instance, I know we still need to define how we want to be more streamlined about what we call compliant versus compliant with exceptions versus noncompliant, or compliant, sorry. This one looks noncompliant to me.
Okay, so then do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll, I'll.
Go ahead.
Sorry, Pablo, go ahead.
No, I mean, I, I too went through and, 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 and did a review of, you know, which ones were compliant, which ones were noncompliant. One that actually showed up as noncompliant with exceptions, I, it had two indicators saying it was noncompliant and one saying it was compliant. So I, I personally moved that into the noncompliant category. So I had two in noncompliant, two in noncompliant with exceptions. And those two with exceptions were like completely out of our control. It was, it was completely COVID-related. And then the other eight were compliant.
Correct.
So, like, I'm going to repeat, so two of them that were noncompliant were completely out of our control. And I value these. If, if I didn't place value on, 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 on some of these things, then I should just quit my day job because this is, this is what I've dedicated myself to professionally.
But if we're not compliant, we're noncompliant, right?
My question is, are we? You know, when two of them are really out of our control?
Yeah, I would say noncompliant, and here's the reason why. And then I'm okay with that.
Right.
And the vast majority, so we got a, you know, 80% on the test.
No, I'm saying, even if you count those two that were out of our control, they're still noncompliant, even though they were out of our control. Right? And then the other, or there's eight, so the, the other two indicators were 4.3 and 4.7, eight of the 10 indicators were marked noncompliant. Right? Those two, so they're driving at 4.3 and 4.8, the two that are noncompliant.
Right.
So I see what you're saying. Yeah, there's two that are driving that, but even if it's just those two, it's, it's still a quarter of them.
They have more, you know, the, the, the sub-indicators, which are, are important. But I, I guess I'm looking at the broader 4.1, 4.2, and, and not all those.
Right.
We can, I,
Okay, so I think, like, this isn't good, like, I don't think we can decide how we should be counting right now. Since there's potentially different ways to count. And again, that's like only one way to think about like how these reports should be read in terms of, right, is it just like absolute number of things? Is it kind of the big picture? So it sounded like Clark wanted to make another motion.
Yeah.
So go ahead.
Make a message that we amended to say that it's noncompliant.
So you want to make a motion to accept the monitoring report OE4 as noncompliant?
I'll second the motion.
I think Brian had a clarifying question, though, sorry, before my dogs started barking.
And, yeah, no, just that it wouldn't be an amendment. This is, this would be the disposition of the board for accepting this report.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
That would be my understanding of how it would, how it would be.
All right, so don't call an amendment to say that you're going to have a, a, a new motion.
Do we vote on the motion at hand first and then have Clark re-move to vote with his motion? Because we have a motion on the table and a second on the table, so we have to dispense of that vote first, right?
Right, because we, yeah.
All right, so the current motion is to accept the monitoring report OE4 with noted exceptions. I have a motion and a second. Hillary?
Aye.
Pablo?
Just to clarify, we're voting for the original motion as
Yes.
compliant with exceptions.
Yes.
Okay, aye.
And we're, we're voting on, sorry, but I, I may have messed it up with the way I did it, but we're voting on what Brian has submitted, and then we can say that we say it's noncompliant separately. Is that right?
I'm going to write up in the disposition that the board disagrees with that. Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I've been just writing notes about it, so yeah.
So Clark?
Aye, I guess. I'm just, I'm still confused, sorry.
Yeah, sorry. I got lost. We're approving the idea that we accept the board, accept the report, but that the board's finding is that it is noncompliant.
No, we are voting on the motion to accept the report as submitted, which is in compliance with noted exceptions.
Okay.
That's the vote on the table right now.
Thanks.
So Clark, what do you want to say?
No.
Okay. Emily?
No.
And I will say yes. So let's just clarify then, it passes, but I want to make sure I have all the concerns about the, in the disposition. And so I think, so what I've written down is that the questions around the, how we measure and understand indicators to lead to a voter, or a finding of noncompliance is the question, and that the number here is significant enough based for, that it should be noncompliant.
Yes.
Would be the disposition of Clark and Emily.
And we could, maybe, I think the other thing is to clarify, like, what's the practical implication of noncompliance? Like, does that mean then we set a time where we ask for the report to come back? Or like it necessarily comes back at the next meeting?
Okay, so like, and to your point, what I said earlier, that like, we can't,
Yeah.
Like, none of the things that are noncompliant can be answered within another meeting? So, that's, I think, the other piece, right? Like, yeah.
I think we just should hash that out. I will say to that end, I think, like, before a year from now, it'd be great to just get an update on kind of recruitment efforts in terms of administrators and teachers of color and just, you know, what other strategies we're using. Like, I think we had tried some different things and there's always more we can do, but, and I know that's not something we'll talk about, be ready to.
Okay. Okay, any other, I, I put that in there for.
Thanks.
Can you add one more thing for that to make sure that we discuss when we talk about how we're determining compliant versus noncompliance? One of the things we may want to discuss too is, is there a need to put in undeterminable? Because that might alleviate some of the, the questions that Pablo was bringing up, which were valid too, which is if it's out of our control, is there a difference between noncompliant or noncompliant due to things that you couldn't control? Right?
Okay, okay. Thank you. Um, okay. I'm going to move us on to the next report. So I will take a motion for approval of a monitoring report for OE10 facilities, which is here in compliance with noted exceptions.
So moved.
And I'll take a second.
A second.
Okay, thanks. I'm going to open it up for questions. So I have a question, Brian, about the new, I'm looking for what it's called, CMCS or?
CMMS.
Yeah, so, so unexpected changes in the system. So can you walk us through a little bit, like, what was, so we had, we weren't planning on changing this.
So, and Tony, Tony Cidio is here too, to, he works more, more closely with it. Like, the, the unexpected changes, we had historically had, Like the, the unexpected changes, we had historically had a reporting process that we had received from our current CMMS, which is School Dude. And so they had dropped some of the reporting capabilities that they had in the early, early spring, I think. Tony can speak to that a little bit more. We're just looking, looking for just a more robust system to be able to do some higher quality reporting. Now is the right time for us to, to make that move as we're looking at, you know, significant upgrades to a lot of our systems. So Tony, do you want to speak to that a little bit more?
Sure. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep. Um, yes, we had initially planned on replacing the system as we moved forward with the referendum project. Since we're adding a considerable amount of new equipment, we didn't want to do it beforehand. Part of the replacement of that system will be identifying all of our equipment, putting in their life expectancy, the date they were originally installed. That's not only old equipment, but new equipment. It's bringing us up to the 21st century where we're supposed to be at. We had talked about doing it a while back. It got postponed quite a few years ago due to lack of funding, then we moved, we were going to move forward, we talked to, when Marta was here, but due to lack of funding, we held off at that point. Now, as part of the referendum, it, this is the direction we need to go and bring us into the 21st century, put it that way. Any other, as far as the data we didn't get, part of that is related to the fact we did shut down and that any data we had would have been drastically skewed. Since we were closed for multiple months, we did complete nine hundred and fifty-four work orders and a hundred and fifty-two PMs, which consist of multiple PMs per PM. You may get a PM to change all the filters in the administration building. You'll get one PM, but it consists of changing maybe forty filters over there. So and PMing forty different pieces of equipment and so forth. So by the end of this, we hope to have a CMMS that will give us everything from our square footage, what kind of carpet do we have in the room, identify the carpet, ceiling tile, exit lights, lights in the, in the room, the ceiling, model numbers. Where in the future, if you need to go replace a part, you have that data right in front of you. You know where to go, you know where to get it, you know what to have and stop. So this will help us provide a extreme amount of efficiency within the department moving forward as well.
Go ahead, Hillary.
Uh, Brian, I was going to ask on that, kind of on the same issue. How do I want to ask this? Because I do appreciate all the expertise and, and advice Mike Huffman has given the district, but I guess I didn't realize advising us in choosing a new system would be part of his role. So is this indicative of not having a full-time business manager, that we are lending his, asking for his help in this manner, or how, how did he get pulled into having to do this?
No, it's more, more so just using his, his experience, so, and just being able to use all of our, all of our resources that we have available to us. You know, I mean, certainly if we had a full-time business manager, we would, you know, likely have somebody who might have some expertise in that. But between Mike and his colleagues and the variety of, of districts that they've worked with, just looking at different systems, you know, we thought we'd be able to capitalize on that.
Okay.
And it would say this is kind of, it, it rolls right into the end deliverable with the referendum. As part of the CMMS in the end, it will have all of our warranty information and things of that nature for all the work that's being done at this point. So they combine together as a whole.
Gotcha. Thanks, Tony.
Sure.
I had a question about our ability to get like longitudinal reporting, so I kind of was having trouble understanding the relationship between the two systems and what we're able to produce as far as reporting, but once we switch over, would we be able to compare it all, you know, our performance pre, pre 2020?
Uh, so Emily, are you, are you asking, can we, will we be able to go back? Go back in time? So Tony, my understanding is we wouldn't be able to go back in time, but we would be able to go year to year than as we're, as we'd be moving forward, is that correct?
We'll be able to go year to year moving forward, of course, but we may be able, able to save some of the data we have from the past to pull some kind of baseline. At this point, with the referendum, the way things have changed, we may be better off looking at, looking forward instead of backwards all the time. So kind of like a fresh beginning.
Right, but I think having a benchmark of where we were is important, at least from a board perspective, like I know for your day-to-day or just trying to, you know, do the, get, get the number as high as you can as far as completed orders, but for us to know that there, in terms of a pattern, it's hard to do that when we can't look back.
Yeah, it, the benchmark moving forward should change.
If, if there's ability to compare between school systems, but I know it's hard to compare given the age of our buildings, so having some way for the board to compare is, is really helpful.
The big comparison should come from the amount of work orders that are being performed through our PM system should exceed our regular work orders that come in, the day-to-day work orders. That is totally off balance right now because of the age of the schools and all the work that needed to be done. Well, we're bringing a lot of that up to par right now. Not everything, but quite a bit of it. So if we get that number to change and get more equal with our preventive maintenance, the goal would be to have more preventive maintenance work orders being completed than your, your regular day-to-day work orders. Then you're running a more efficient, efficient property, so.
Tony, this is Clark, I think to follow up on Emily's point there too. Having some of the historical data to show that those numbers are changing is, will be helpful.
Yeah.
Down now, that's great. Our, our starting point is, we're starting upside down now, right?
Yeah.
Okay, the other.
We should be able to get some of that, yeah.
As far as getting the old data, might, I'm assuming that when you switch systems like that, getting that old data is, is part of the struggle to make sure it can be imported into the new system. Is that going to be something that the new CMS, that's supplier will be able to help us with, or is that going to be a lot of manual entry as well?
Uh, they would definitely, we would be looking at having them help us with that, yes.
Because you want all the age of the assets, all that kind of stuff that you already have, right? Be able to plan out those, um, schedules.
Yes, and everything updated as far as everything new that, that's going in at this.
Okay, cool. Thanks.
Sure.
Pablo, did you have any questions?
Nope, they were asked, I'm, I'm good over here.
Okay, mine were asked as well. So I have a motion and a second. I will take, all in favor. Clark?
Aye.
Pablo?
Aye.
Emily?
Aye.
And Hillary?
Aye.
And I for myself. Thank you. Okay, and then last up on our action agenda items from the superintendent is approval of fire suppression projects to Atwater and Lake Bluff Elementary Schools. Mike Huffman discussed this briefly at our last board meeting. Brian, do you want to give a update on what is proposed here?
Yes, so, so as we have been making safety and security upgrades to our, to our buildings, both Lake Bluff and Atwater, in the oldest part of the buildings, do not have sprinkler, sprinkler systems. And so the fire suppression systems or sprinkler systems, as I would call them, maybe more commonly known as, are, are being recommended as part of just, part of this project, just to complete that from a safety and security standpoint. Uh, so we feel like it's a, it's a reasonable time for us to do this. Because of the, because of the amount of money that it will cost to be able to, to put the sprinkler systems in, it exceeded the a hundred thousand dollar point of needing board approval, as we look at changes or additions to our referendum projects or scope, if you, if you will. Uh, and so this is something that, that we feel is the right time to be able to get done. If we don't do this right now, it's something that just continues to be a concern with our North Shore Fire Department. And we want to make sure that we can address, address that situation as part of our referendum process.
Thank you. Questions? I, I had a question about, I guess I don't, like, the timing of the project? Given that we're now thinking about the possibility of students being in the buildings in eight weeks?
Yeah. Yeah, I think, I think Mike Huffman's also with us. So Mike, can you speak a little bit to the, to the timing?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. So we have asked for a somewhat unusual approach with North Shore Fire Department, and they have granted our approach, and that is that as we're phasing in construction, so pick your building, if you say Atwater and we're working in classroom one oh six, we would immediately go ahead and install distribution piping, so there might be four sprinkler heads in that classroom and some inch and a half piping that connects those foreheads and then stubs out into the corridor. That's very easy for us to design very, very quickly. So we're taking advantage of the fact that we're there constructing right now, but we've made this late add. Can we get into those spaces while we're working in them and not have to come back to a completed space later and introduce the sprinkler system? But what that does is, well, it does a couple of things. One, it allows our design team the time they need to design the more complex parts of the system, which is certainly the main lines that will run down the corridors, zone valves, a fire pump if, if needed, the fire department's connection to the outside of the building, some of those more higher-end design components. Need, our design team needs some time to calculate and, and, and design those. So we'll get the distribution piping in the classrooms now, but it would probably be next summer that we would execute the design for those higher-end pieces. And therefore, it wouldn't be until the end of the summer that we would go live, basically charge the system with water and, and experience the protection that the system provides. So North Shore Fire Department has given us this grace period where they say, we're very, very happy that you're pursuing a sprinkler system, and it will allow you to not jump through so many hoops with fire barriers and fire dampers as you go through walls and things like that. But we have to have some timeline that we can count on, and they were comfortable with that one-year timeline to bring the system live.
Thanks, Mike. Clark, you had a question?
I was just going to ask for clarification, just to, that's great that they helped us with that. But to clarify, that doesn't mean that we're, are we worse off than we are now until that time, or we just can't get better until that time? I just wanted to make sure.
No, definitely not worse than you are now. So there's nothing about the construction activity that takes you back in terms of safety. Certainly you've moved forward with every bit of construction that we've done. Your fire detection system has improved along the way, your fire alarm panels are all being replaced with up-to-date alarm panels. So the detection system is definitely improving as we go. It's just that you, you, you don't bring on that suppression system. Uh, I think there are, in lieu of the suppression system, the fire department was going to require that we fix some of the ills, if you will, of the buildings that have been present for a long time. And now they're relaxing that requirement, knowing that the suppression system is coming.
Great, thank you.
Uh, any further questions?
And Mike also included his monthly report, just as part of these materials also. So that was extending beyond the, the fire suppression, but I just thought as a, as a matter of time, if people had questions on that report as part of this discussion, that might be a good place to have that also.
Thanks. Does anybody have, oh, go ahead.
No, 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 I don't have any questions. I was just going to thank Mike for the report, because it's nice to see that things are moving along and that, you know, classrooms are, and things are getting turned over and, you know, just that we are, we are continuing to move forward. So thank you to Mike, thank you to Tony, thank you to everyone who is working on this every day and just all the patience from everyone in the buildings, as I know they're not ideal. And I just, I don't have questions about the, the fire component. I'm moderately appalled that we don't have in our old buildings such a system. So I'm glad that we're in a position to be able to do this and to, I think, I think it's a although expensive price tag, a well, well-used vote and price tag, so I just wanted to say thanks.
Thanks, Hillary. I also want to echo what Hillary said, and I really, really appreciate the photos, since it feels like it's been a year. It hasn't been a year, but it feels like it's been a year since I've been in any of the class, in any of the buildings. And to see some of the work getting completed is really exciting. And so we'll have to maybe think about putting together a little video at some point for others to see where all the money is going to, so, but yeah, I appreciate that. I don't, I don't have any other questions about your update either. Pablo, Emily, or Clark?
One, a small clarification, I just wanted to make sure that teachers were able to get their supplies out of the trailers. I, there was like a note in there that I think that's what that said, but I just wanted to double check.
Yes, yes, we brought in CH Coakley, our moving company. Little bit of double handling, we, we brought things from the trailers into a specific room in each of Atwater and Lake Bluff. They had multiple days to get in, grab their materials. If they were going to a temporary space, they took it to that temporary space. And then what they didn't take, we moved back into, either into trailer or into a, a storage area within the building. Uh, and then we have CH Coakley scheduled for the dates that those teachers' classrooms get actually turned over.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay, so I'm going to move us back, so we have a motion and a second to approve the the, what does it say exactly? The, the fire suppression projects for Atwater and Lake Bluff Elementary Schools. And so I'm going to go ahead and take a vote on that. Emily? Oh, sorry, I'll come back to you. Hillary?
Aye.
Okay, Pablo?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
And I for myself, so yes, looking forward to being fully fire suppression. And I from myself, so, uh, yes, looking forward to being, uh, fully, uh, fire suppression safe. Um, thank you, Mike, for, um, joining us tonight. Um, okay, so up next is the superintendent's consent agenda. I will take a motion.
So moved.
In a second. Thanks, Pablo. Um, all right, all in favor? Uh, Clark?
Hi.
Emily?
Aye.
Pablo?
Hi.
Hillary?
Aye.
And I for myself. Um, welcome to all the new teachers, excited to, uh, meet you at some point. And, um, our new human resources manager, best of luck to you, Mr. Waszloski. And Kelly, um, we will miss you terribly, uh, so good luck to you as well. Um, I'm sure we'll still be emailing you in the next few weeks when we don't know what we're doing or where to find things. Um, but, um, thanks for everything you've done for us in the district. Um.
Thank you, Kelly, and then a, a shout out to, um, our new theater director, who's an S.H.S. alumnus. Uh, his family had quite a legacy in the theater department, um, so welcome.
Did you teach him while you were here?
I did not teach him, but his older brother was a good friend of my brother. So when I saw the name, I immediately found out he was, uh, seven years behind me. I'd never met him, but, uh, excited, excited. He's got quite a, a legacy apparently, so excited to have him on board.
Thank you. Um, all right, so board action agenda items. Um, you'll see on here the updated work plan, so this was based on our conversation last time. Um, I wanted to see if anybody has any additional updates or changes they'd like to make. Otherwise, we can go ahead and approve this one, and then I can bring it back again. Um, I'll keep making sure that it's included in the board packet, so we can look at it and kind of see what we're supposed to be doing that month. But, um, let me know if there's anything that you noticed that you wanted me to change.
Hey, pardon, this is Clark regarding the town halls that we wanna do.
Uh huh.
Um, I know we talked about earlier than, and tonight's, we're gonna do another one at the next, um, board meeting. Are we planning, did we agree to do them once a month, once a quarter? Did we, or we were just gonna do them often for now as we get through this?
I don't think we had, um, discussed like, uh, how often, but to your point, I think, given how much is happening right now, it might make sense just to do it before every meeting. Um, so, and I can advertise it as such.
Yeah, and that would've been the only thing I would've added on here, uh, just going through it would be add those monthly then in the linkage.
Okay, um, does the rest of you concur?
I do, however, I was, I thought, you know, we had talked about doing town halls in lieu of linkages. However, I thought I remember, and it's possibly I'm losing my mind, that, um, we had sort of picked out a few, um, stakeholder groups that we thought would be good to connect with in the beginning of the year. So I wasn't sure, I didn't see those on here. Um, and so I wasn't sure if we were still planning to do that.
So, um.
About students, maybe?
Um, definitely students and
We also mentioned, um, uh, parents of, uh, with special, students with special needs. And that's another one.
So are you guys thinking?
Sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I was gonna say we struggled with identifying which ones to do because all of them we wanted, wanted to make sure we did them all, and then we have them. Cause they're all, right now, they're all, the traditional linkages are bunched in March as we normally would do them. But we took them out of October, which is what we did last time, right? We had one a semester, one set a semester. We split them up.
I'm wondering if, um, Brian, I guess this might be, um, something we can talk about when you talk about the reopening updates, but, um, is there gonna be an opportunity for students and parents to fill out a survey again about how things are going, like, you know, in the next couple of weeks? Just to kind of get a pulse of what's happening and then, um, you know, like, that's, if, if there is something that we can change, we probably wanna know sooner than later, um.
Yeah, so I, I think we can, I think we can do that. The other thing that, and I'll talk about this, the other thing that I think, um, we'll take a look at is, uh, um, preparing for the potential transition to a hybrid model. Um, so as, as we would, we'll need to get a read from families. And we know that there's many families that are looking at, um, you know, virtual learning, no matter what model we choose. Um, so we'll need to be able to get that feedback and an updated sense of that feedback from what we had for the summer. Um, so we'll make sure that, that, uh, maybe those two surveys can be combined as we're, as we're moving, moving forward. Um, we certainly want to do that. And then we certainly wanna, um, you know, survey staff too as we're, as we're moving, moving forward just to make sure we can take that feedback as we're, as we're going, so.
Yeah, so I guess I'm just thinking if we were, what I was, maybe what we could do is have one, um, like, if, if we're gonna try to meet with specific groups of parents, then that might make sense to do one of the meeting, one of our board meeting, uh, timeframes and like do it at six o'clock, but just invite particular parents to come to that one, and then have one be a town hall. Um, but I do think like we want as a board to be able to get feedback on how things are going and next steps as part of, which in some ways might be different as part of reopening. Um, so I don't know, like, and then we also need to have a facilities update at some point. Um, you know, and so I guess I'm just trying to think through like what makes the most sense in terms of, um, either right before our board meetings versus different times. So I'm open for either. Um, I do think that we all know that we'll get better, uh, better, um, attendance if we specifically invite groups of parents and say we wanna hear from you specifically. So, you know, I think to your point and to students as well, um, and have maybe Sadie and Jack and the new board member help us with that.
I do like the idea of doing it the hour before the, um, the board meeting. It does make for a longer Tuesday, but it also is easier to schedule.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I agree with Clark. I think that, um, I think we have, definitely have more meaningful, uh, conversations on the days that are, when we have town halls before, because I feel like people are already talking about the agenda. And that is a, even though we didn't have big participation tonight, um, that's still definitely a better way.
Okay, so, uh, do you guys wanna, uh, have a linkage with students at the, before the next town, next board meeting? And start there?
Yep.
Yes?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so I'll work with Jack and Sadie and getting, asking them to recruit some students to come. And then
Sorry, for younger students. Yeah, can we make sure that we open that up to any student in the district that's interested? Because I do think, um, I appreciate high school voices, I really do, I wanna hear high school voices, but I know that our younger kids have just as many opinions, and I don't want to ignore them as well.
Okay, yeah, so make sure that parents can bring, come on with them.
I wonder, you know, if we, I, I, I completely concur with Hillary, and I think, um, while I wanna hear from all students, the other night I was witness to, um, Principal Rasko did an incredible, like, it was heart-moving. Jackie was in the other room and was crying. She was so moved at how well Tammy connected with, um, the students. And it was clear that these children, you know, fourth graders, I think there were some third graders on there, could articulate their feelings and ask questions and engage. Um, and as much as I love hearing from my high school students, I know we've often kind of given open mic to, a lot to our high school students, and while I still wanna do that moving forward, I wonder, you know, if we don't wanna hear from, uh, some of the younger ones, like this very next meeting. Um, middle school or, or even, even as young as, you know, these elementary kids. And, and it really was, was watching how well, uh, uh, Tammy Rasko like interacted, our new principal. Um, it was mind-blowing, it was really good. So, first off, kudos to her, uh, Brian, for, uh, job well done, and, um, that would be my thought. We hear a lot from high school kids, and I love high school kids. I taught high school. I have no problem with high school kids, but
Okay, I mean, I think that's right. We didn't hear from them last time, so we can start there and maybe, uh, you know, have two sessions, right? I mean, it would probably be, it's not like we don't wanna hear from as many students as possible, so. Uh, we could also do students, like the high school students on a Wednesday, potentially.
Yeah.
Um, when they're working from home.
When they're off.
It's not, it's not a day off, it's just
No, I know.
They're learning asynchronously from home.
Actually, we shouldn't ask them to be on the computer then, probably.
I agree.
All right, but I think Jack and Sadie would feel, help us with figuring that piece out, so, okay.
For the only comment to that real quick, is I think in the today's town hall, we told that, that audience that we were gonna have another one.
I know, but I mean, if we just move it, we could
Yeah.
Yeah, for sure. Okay, so I'll make those updates in there, but otherwise everything is fine, and I can just maybe
Yep.
Say that, okay, so, um, I have a motion in a second then to approve of this current, um, work, the school board work plan, um, with the noted updates. And so I will take a, uh, motion, or I will take a vote. Uh, Hillary?
Aye.
Pablo?
Hi.
Uh, Emily?
Aye.
Clark?
Hi.
And I from myself, thank you. Um, and then board consent agenda, I will take a motion.
So moved.
In a second. Thank you. Um, in favor, Clark?
Hi.
Hillary?
Aye.
Pablo?
Hi.
Emily?
Aye.
And I from myself, thank you. Um, all right, first up for district operations is twenty, uh, reopening updates. Uh, so Brian sent us a memo and some metrics tables. Is there something you wanna highlight, Brian, before we ask you questions?
Uh, yeah, just, just to note that the, um, the metrics that were sent, that are attached here and sent out were something that I had received on Friday. Um, and so, uh, that is, is, uh, breaking news, um, consistent with, uh, what, uh, some of our, um, uh, counterparts up in, uh, Washington and Ozaki County are using and, and over in Milwaukee County. Uh, but these are our metrics that we've really been waiting for. We were hopeful to be able to get some leadership from state level. From the Department of Health Services about three or four weeks ago, they come out with a, a report that we were hoping that would have metrics in it, but it did not. Uh, and, uh, so this is the guidance, again, using the North Shore Health Department as our, uh, as our data, um, experts and, and where we're taking our recommendations from, I think is really important. Um, this is the, uh, the first time that we've gotten, um, some metrics that would define, um, as we're looking at which learning models to move between, um, you know, what metrics we should be using, um, and, and at what levels. So this is really, again, breaking news and, and important, important, um, to be able to have us, have us process and be able to use. Um, as we celebrate the first day of school, uh, we also know that our decision to think about, um, turning the dial to a hybrid model, uh, is probably about six weeks away. Um, and we, there's a lot of considerations that need to be taken, um, taken into our thought process as we're moving, uh, to potentially bringing students back to school, um, at, at least in a hybrid model. And so these metrics, um, will be one of the primary indicators of whether or not we should move forward with that. Uh, certainly along with our staffing, our ability to, to staff, uh, a hybrid model. Uh, but, but these metrics are, are really important, so I just encourage you to take some time. I can take some questions off of this. Um, I know one of the things that, um, that I've received a question on, um, that we could, uh, potentially modify here, um, was, um, one of the metrics in our original reopening plan and the metric that's shown here is a, a seven day, uses a seven day rolling average, um, and takes a fourteen day average of those seven day rolling averages, if you will, which seems to be a little convoluted. Um, and so when you look at the actual, uh, metrics, it talks about a, a fourteen day, uh, positivity rate. Um, and so one of the, um, questions that's come up, which I, I think is a, is a good idea, is to be able, instead of have the seven day rolling average, is make it a fourteen day rolling average. Um, then you wouldn't be averaging the averages, um, in order to get that fourteen day. Um, that would be one of the things that, um, that we could take a look at. So, again, the North Shore Health Department's been our source data, um, data warehouse, um, for getting these. Um, they've been able to put together reports consistently for us, so I'd like to be able to just, I, I mean, take your questions, but also, um, you know, if we can, uh, zero in on, on what we'd be looking at for the indicators, and then, um, we'll be able to track that as we're moving forward. I anticipate being able to bring a data set to the board, um, on October thirteenth, um, that can help inform our discussions on whether or not we'd be moving to a hybrid model or not. Um, that timing works out really well with, um, monitoring how well behaved we were, um, over Labor Day weekend. Um, because the, that data should track, um, the best case scenario for looking at that data, looking at it over, uh, two transmission cycles. Um, so for COVID, that's fourteen days is one transmission cycle. So, um, if you take a look at the data from the Fourth of July, for example, and you look twenty-eight days from the Fourth of July, you'll see a pretty significant increase. Uh, so in order for us to feel confident that we're not gonna see a spike based on people's behaviors, um, from, and transmissions from Labor Day, we'd really wanna get through a twenty-eight day period after Labor Day. Um, this process, um, and looking at October thirteenth, we'll be able to, to use these indicators, um, over the next month and really have a, I think, a really clear, um, uh, a clear view on whether or not we spiked and, and whether we're continuing to, to have a, uh, uh, increased prevalence of COVID-19 or, or whether or not we're ready to, um, turn the dial a bit and, and move into, uh, to a hybrid model.
So Brian, with that, am I hearing that right, that at that meeting would be the discussion or the determination if we do open up to hybrid in, at the end of the first trimester?
I, oh, go ahead.
No, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I, that's what I would recommend. I mean, we, we haven't decided that. I think that would be a, a board, uh, a board conversation. That's what I'm recommending. Um, if we wait to the second meeting in October, um, we're starting to get pretty late, um, into kind of making a transition. And with the idea that we'd have the most relevant data that we're gonna need, um, you know, by October thirteenth, looking at post-Labor Day, and as other communities are reintegrating, uh, the lessons we're gonna learn from places that have gone full face-to-face or gone to a hybrid model, I think we'll have all the data that we're gonna need by October thirteenth in order to make that recommendation. But that also allows us to do then is, it gives us, you know, a, a full three weeks to be able to inform and plan and be ready to go for a hybrid model if we're to make that move on November ninth.
Yeah, I think similarly to, you know, the concern this summer of communicating and allowing parents enough time to adjust to a transition, I think that still holds true going from, you know, virtual to hybrid. Um, and I do, I acknowledge how much work has been done to get us to open today, and knowing that there's still a lot of work to get us into, you know, the next phase of this. I just hope as much time as we can allow ourselves and preparation and, and lead time. Um, you know, I, I hope we can make those, those accommodations. But I think having that as sort of the benchmark meeting, I guess you could say, that, you know, that's where we're gonna be looking at that, I think is helpful to, to know and for people to be aware of. Um, because I know my kid, one of my kids asked their teacher today, "Or when do we get to come back to school?" So I, it's on the minds of everybody, so I appreciate that.
Uh, along those same lines, I was wondering, um, if, uh, if there is an unfortunate spike in uh, November ninth, then, uh, what would be
You froze up for, you froze up for a bit, sorry.
If we can't go back November ninth, what would be the next logical decision point? Like, are we gonna decide every two weeks, or?
So I, I think that's a, that's another conversation that we need to have. Um, as we have talked about it internally, um, Um, there's some concern around, one, you know, having a decision, you know, reviewed every two weeks and looking, constantly looking over our shoulder. About when we would transition, uh, makes pretty difficult. Um, we also think about that time of year. Um, and we think about like people's getting together for Thanksgiving, getting together for the holidays. Um, that uh internally, at least again preliminarily, it may mean more, more sense for us to go um to the. To the end of the second quarter, kind of the semester transition, um, and take a look at it then. I know that's a long period of time.
January.
Um, yeah, so I think that's a conversation we need to take, we need to have as a board. Um, and, and when, what period of time would, would make sense? Would it, do you look at from November ninth? You know, do you look at uh December first? Um, you, you know, um, and that may depend on if we're still in a hybrid model, but we're almost there. Like we, we, you know, I, I think we're going to know more information when we get to October thirteenth and, and have an idea uh to be able to set that out as we, as we go. So I think it's something we need to keep in mind. I'm not sure. We'd want to define that necessarily right now.
Okay.
And just kind of take it step by step.
Well, you got a question in the town hall about um flu, and I wondered if you had talked to the health department at all about um. Um, I don't know, any like how COVID and flu are likely to interact? And if it's really important to get kids and staff vaccinated, what we can do to that end, what we should do to that end?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's one of the biggest X factors that, that we're all facing is we don't know the interaction between flu season and COVID, just because of the, the timing. Of how the pandemic came about. Um, so certainly, everything that I'm hearing is a recommendation to have, you know, to get your flu shot. Um, and to be able to have that, that defense. Um, again, and that's a, that's a family decision. Uh, but certainly it's something that, that I think the experts are, are recommending as we're moving forward. Um, and we've had, uh, you know, I think through our health department, our, our health offices. You know, we've, we've provided information of where you can get flu shots and being able to accommodate that as, as much as, as much as we can. Um, so I would, I would say that we would probably, probably do that and as we're looking at, you know, trying to keep people healthy and safe. Um, just being able to provide those outlets and what those resources are as we're moving forward. Uh, we, we do know, or we, we do anticipate that this is going to be a, a complicating factor. Because many of the um symptoms that you'd have for the flu are symptoms that you, you know, would have for COVID. And so you can just get regular sick, um, but the precautions that we need to take at a school level now are ramped up a bunch. Um, whereas, you know, sometimes it was, you know, just kind of work your way through it or go home for the day and come back. Um, you know, now it's going to be probably go home, get tested, stay home till you get the results. Um, and then depending on what those results are, come back. So it's just uh, it's just a lot more complicated. Um, but again, we think until we get a, a treatment or a vaccine for, for COVID nineteen, that's, that's the space that we're going to navigate. Again, which makes it really tricky when you're thinking about, um, you know, coming back to school. Um, and, and providing a timeline for that, knowing that we're, you know, right about that second quarter, we'll be entering. You know, we'll be in flu season and entering into that. And that doesn't mean that we certainly can't or shouldn't come back. Because I think we all want to be back face-to-face as quickly as possible, but, um, but those are complicating, definitely complicating factors.
I, I think it's our understanding, Brian, that we can't, you know, you can't mandate vaccinations of the, with students and staff. But are, are there things that we can um be more aggressive about? And I know you said you're trying to get, you're doing communications, you're strongly encouraging it. Are there things that we can do for? Uh, making it more readily available um with partnering with, I don't know. A mobile, mobile team that comes and does it with their corporations? I don't know if that would cost a lot or if they'd be willing to do that for. For free in this case, but is, are there things that we can do or that you can, the team can consider to try to be a little bit more aggressive in that campaign this year?
Yeah, I think that's something I can talk to Kelly Barlow about, our, our district nurse, to be able to see what partnerships are out there. And it, and there may be, you know, with, with people's consciousness and, and awareness being that much heightened. Um, there may be a lot more opportunities uh for us to um, and demand for us to take advantage of that this year. Um, and some of those partnerships might pop up, so uh, you know, I think we're, you know, our focus was on, on, you know, getting to today. Uh, and, and getting, getting uh, as we're moving forward. Um, but certainly we're, we're playing chess with this thing and making sure that we're one, one or two, three steps ahead of it. Um, and that can reach out to those partnerships then and as we would move forward. So again, that would be availability or, or communications on where to get it.
Can I ask about uh two things? One, uh, the reopening, you've mentioned in your executive summary that you're going to pull together the teaching. Uh, and learning reopening work group again. Um, and so I think uh, we as board members have gotten questions from parents um interested in being part of that work group. So can you talk a little bit about what, like who's going, like if it's going to be some of the original people and like how people might uh express their interest to you?
Yeah, so the, the plan was to re, um, you know, reach out to people that were involved over the summer. Uh, but if anybody is interested in, in serving on that, you know, they can certainly send me an email. I'm not sure what people's availability is now versus over the summer. The idea was that, you know, if people were involved over the summer, um, you know, their level of knowledge and depth of understanding in our process. Um, you know, we want to capitalize on that, but certainly having fresh perspectives also is helpful sometimes as we roll through it. And especially as we get into, you know, experiencing, you know, the first couple of weeks of school, to be able to have that. Uh, perspective, I think can be, can be important as we, as we go. And we just don't know how this is, how this is going to land. I think we want to, we want to be fully prepared for our hybrid model. Um, and I think, again, we're going to learn more from places like Whitefish Bay and, and that are doing a hybrid model. Um, places like St. Roberts that are doing face-to-face, so we're going to learn from those districts. Uh, but we want to make sure that we've got things locked in as well as we can. Um, so when we do the hybrid model, whether it's, you know, the beginning, beginning of the second quarter or sometimes throughout the year. We're really, we're ready to go, ready to be locked in there, so.
Okay, and then um. You've mentioned a few times, like, kind of like learning from the other districts around us, so how, is there uh. Uh, Pablo, like, you know, board members, we might talk to other board members about what's happening in those places, but are the superintendents still speaking on a regular basis? And is there a way to like share, I guess, at this point, best practices? I mean, I think one of the things that. Was surprising to me on our call with Swasso was that, like, no matter what all of us have done in terms of reopening, we're all dealing with the exact same problems. And issues, like, so it wasn't like the model that was determining that, it was like everything else, like apparently. So I'm just curious if there's a way for you guys to share, like, okay, so this is what really helped us with this particular thing, just so that. You know, like it sounds, since everybody is doing something really different. Um, you know, like, we have the benefit in some ways of watching that happen for eight weeks before we try to do it, so.
Definitely, so yeah, so I'm still meeting twice a week with the North Shore Superintendent and the Health Directors from the North Shore and Washington Ozaki County. Um, so as we, you know, as we're in our, some people started school last week, so we've got a, a full. Uh, week's worth of case studies of what, you know, to do, and it's more, more so of when this happens, like what. What do you do in hindsight? So for example, the communications, communication lines between the um school. Health nurses or the health aides and the teacher directly in the classroom is really important. So you don't get into a situation like one of the districts had, um, that, because what, what they're finding to people's dismay is that people are sending kids who are positive cases. Um, and that is troubling. I think the assumption was that people would know that they're positive and not send their students. So knowing that people are going to likely, let's plan for people to send positive students. And make sure that we have those lists in teachers' hands, um, and so teachers are taking attendance at the very beginning of the day. And that um students, like in some case, some cases have sat in class for three hours before they're identified as somebody who should be there. Because they're there and they're present. Um, so making sure your attendance rules are in, in place, making sure that those communications are. Um, are uh, you know, communicated very well is really, uh, really important. So again, this is drilling down on some of the refinement of the protocols um that are in place. Now, those are places that, that have started, you know, full face-to-face and um, you know, it, it's a, it's a different, a little bit different situation than we're in. But there are things that we'll continue to learn. I know Principal Kenny has also been in touch directly with the principal over at Whitefish Bay because they're starting in a hybrid model. Uh, I think he's going to be visiting over there in the next couple of weeks to be able to just kind of look and see, kind of what, what's going on over there. Uh, we certainly have St. Roberts also, um, who we can, you know, very easily just be in touch with and be able to just take a look at what's working. Um, because we want to make, we, we want to be able to become face-to-face. Uh, and if, if there are certain things that, that they're being successful with, we certainly want to make sure that that's part of our protocol. Um, and then just cautiously for us, turn the dial up and our uh interaction face-to-face and. Eventually get ourselves to safely being back um full-time.
Great, thanks.
Right, Brian, I was, I was going to ask if you were, um, I was glad to hear you mentioned Ozaki County and other um. Areas that districts that you're speaking with, even though it's not officially our gating criteria, it's been making decisions. Um. Because I was thinking about the COVID burden, and if you look at the, the data that, that we're looking at from the North Shore, it's, it, I think it's pretty clear that one. Community is driving that North Shore number right now. And it could be any given community that changes, right, depending on how things are working. Um, but I also know that the numbers that we're going to be looking at from a gating perspective. Those are based on the positivity rates and cases. Of where people live, right? So. I thought, I just wanted to make sure that we're looking at other communities because. You could have the city of Milwaukee, you could have Ozaki County, you could have Creek, you could have Germantown, you could have all these other locations where some of our staff and students live. Where that's going to impact if we were going back to school, right? Because their risk factors are a little bit different, but they bring some of that risk factor into our community as well, right?
Hmm.
Okay.
Uh, correct, yeah. We'll, we'll have a wide, a wide view of, of what's going on around us. Um, you know, I think we, our primary indicators should be, should be sure what indicators. Uh, but ha- having an idea, you know, if we're, if we're at an acceptable rate and everybody around us is at a critical rate. Um, you know, that, that's going to, that's going to help us make a, make a more informed decision. So, um, yeah, we're on regular, we're in regular communication, I'm in regular communication with those. Uh, directors and it's been very, and superintendent's been very, very informative.
So in your work with the North Shore Health Department, under what obligation are schools under to share? Data of cases? Um, and of course, there are HIPAA laws, um, some districts might not even know they have cases in their district. How does that play out on a practical level? Like what? I mean, there's some, some schools that have capitalized on the fact that a lot of public schools have gone um. Virtual or hybrid and, you know, increase their numbers under what's. How, how, how would people know if they had cases? Are they obligated to, to share those numbers? I've heard varying stories.
Yeah, so the, as the North Shore Health Department gets positive cases, then they share it directly. We have a liaison. Um, named Andrea Warren at the North Shore Health Department, um, who uh is our direct contact. And so we work with her um on any positive cases that come through. So she'll be in touch directly with um Kelly Barlow and myself. Um, and so any, we'll know of any cases that are, that are test positive. Um, in uh, in Shorewood, so and those could pop up on the weekend, they could pop up at any time. So we'll have a list of students um that we, or staff members that we would know would test positive. That's a confidential list. Uh, we share that with the list, we share that with people that would need to know. So people that would be um teachers um of, you know, that student, anybody that would, would be able to identify that student as not, as not, shouldn't be on campus, if you will. Um, because we, we want to make sure that that student is um, is, is not on campus, is not a, a danger. Um, you know, to anybody else and would need to go through that quarantine, through that quarantine process. Um, so that's something that um, that we would know. And as far as like notification um of uh, you know, families or other staff members that wouldn't have. That student, um, there's a more general just notification that we, we have at a student uh or a staff member who's tested positive. Um, in that just more of a FYI type of thing. Um, what's becoming more and more complicated, and this is where we really need community support, um, is in contact tracing. So when you have a positive case, um, what's really important is that we roll through the contact tracing process. Um, with the North Shore Health Department and then with our um health nurses and our health aides. To make sure we can identify any students that would need, that would be considered um close contacts. And would therefore need to go into a quarantine process. So. What's happening in other places, for example, is you have a student that, that maybe um went to school, felt fine. Um, felt sick during the day, ended up going home, um, and testing positive for COVID. You know, two, maybe two days later, while they were in school not feeling well. The idea is who were they next to for fifteen minutes or more within that twenty-four period, hour period of time? And any of those students or staff members would be considered close contacts. So any close contacts to a positive case need to be in quarantine for fourteen days from that point of contact. So what's happening is as people are participating in, in what they feel are important athletic events. Or don't want to go to quarantine, is that close contacts or the, the contact tracing process. Has been very difficult for health departments to work through. Because they know that, that that automatically puts students into a virtual environment and quarantine for fourteen days. The issue for not going to quarantine is that you may have COVID and you may be spreading it to other people. Um, and you don't even know it, right? If you're asymptomatic. Um, and that's creating a, a major issue right now for our local health departments. Um, in making sure that they have an accurate count of who has COVID and who should be in quarantine. So we really ask our families um to make sure that if, and when we do have some positive cases come up. We really do our best to be truthful and faithful to the contact tracing process. We'll assist with that at the district and along with the North Shore Health Department. Uh, but making sure we just stay the course, we know that that'll be a difficult situation. Because in many cases, that's just not going to depend on your behavior. You, you could. Uh, in your family, you could do everything right and not necessarily go anywhere. But you could be sitting to, next to this student in class because of maybe your last name and the alphabet and where you sat next to them in class. And you could go to quarantine for fourteen days, um, because you were a close contact. But that's the point that's really difficult for people to process because it's a change. That means that in many cases, uh, parents need to stay home from work, um, to be able to supervise that student. Uh, I know that's happening, that's what's happening in a lot of places that are going back face-to-face right now, is that there's an abrupt about-face for many families. Um, because of the fact that, and the student doesn't even test positive. Uh, because of the fact that the student is a close contact. There's also a situation where students test positive, um, and parents want to get them tested again. Um, and they get them tested again and get a negative test and think that they can get out of quarantine. And that's also not accurate. So once you have a positive test confirmed, you're a positive test and you're quarantined for fourteen days. Um, and so that's a, a lot of what I'm learning about and that we're talking about in our superintendent and, and health director circles. Around how this is playing out in schools and again, the, the more cooperation, um, you know, we can get from, from the community, the, certainly the better.
Brian, has there been any conversation with the North Shore Health Department about hosting a testing site or, you know, trying to do? Um, or I, I, I'm not sure how those sites are determined, but I'm just thinking as we get closer to October. Um, you know, is that something that we would be able to do in concert with the North Shore Health Department in Shorewood? And to encourage people to get tested? I know there, you know, the one that was in the Nicolay um parking lot in the summer was wild, I think was pretty popular. Um, but I'm not sure how often they're doing those, and now that we do have more sports happening and we do have more things that you are perhaps mingling with different people. I'm just wondering if, you know, if we can encourage perhaps one in our community with their support.
Yeah, I can talk to Anne Christensen, their director. Yeah, I can talk to, uh, Ann Christensen, their director, about that. I know the, the North Shore at this point has been the, the event that we had or the, the testing window that we had with that Nicolay, um, we can see if we can get one, um, here in Shorewood. I know they're continuing to, um, rely on the National Guard sites, um, and, you know, a lot of that depends on resources that are coming in both federally and from the state in order to, to have those sites staffed, um, because certainly like the North Shore Health Department is a, um, you know, is, is not a huge entity that can just like sponsor these things. So, um, I can talk to Ann about that. Certainly we're trying to encourage people, um, you know, to get tested as much as possible. I know there had been a little bit of a lull in testing that was available, um, and so that was a little bit of a concern. I'm not hearing that as much now, um, but, uh, yeah, I, I can, I can see, no guarantees on that.
Well, and I wonder too, just using our sort of partner networks that we have, right? Either through WASB, through SWASA, through your super statewide superintendent's organization, um, just to think through what, and realizing state funding's probably minimal, but, you know, the, the focus of testing, um, particularly for the, our, for our students, I think is an important factor in how we are going back to school everywhere. I, you know, I stand by our decision to do what we did. I don't fault parents for having to find alternative schools. I don't fault other districts for making choices that they made. And so I just want us to be careful too, as, as we learn from each other, that we are acknowledging the tough decisions that everybody has had to make and is making and that we don't, um, I guess shame or blame other places that, and other families that have to make those decisions.
Yeah, I mean, it's certainly, I think, really to our advantage to have peers in Whitefish Bay and at St. Roberts that are in different models than us because, I mean, you've got really three good, great pilots that are going on because nobody really knows. Um, you know, we got really three examples that have essentially the same constituency, um, to be able to, to pull from. So, um, yeah, I, I agree. We certainly want to be as collaborative as we can as we're, um, as we're moving forward. Um, and, and really just be, yeah, the, the testing, the test, the ability to test and, and just be true to the quarantine process, um, we just can't, can't, uh, hate that enough.
Um, okay. Any other questions on this update? Yeah, Emily?
I had one, I, um, well, we, we got a question in our town hall about how the child supervision and onsite, um, situation works, work today? And, and then I have a follow-up question too on that, but just how did it go today?
Uh, as far as I, I didn't, uh, I visited the schools, I didn't see that, I didn't go in, into those sites. Um, so my understanding is it went, uh, pretty well, once we had gotten people, gotten students in there and kind of figuring out the logistics of, of where everybody is. So that's something we'll, we'll certainly continue to, uh, continue to monitor.
And then I just wondered what, um, what happened in terms of having sufficient staff? And i- if we go back to hybrid, if our kindergarten aides are, um, still going to be with us, just given, um, what we know about asking them to take a reassignment to the supervision sites? Um, so I wondered if you'd talked through that and, and any follow-up you were able to have with, with that group?
Yeah, so I, I wasn't, today I wasn't able to have any, any follow-up with the aides, but I plan on doing that this week to be able to reconnect and make sure, um, to clarify some, uh, communications as we're, as we're moving forward. Because as we get to the hybrid, we're going to need to have, you know, have our aides, um, and, and we'd certainly like to be able to have kindergarten aides especially, um, that have, that have worked with our teachers and worked with our youngers, um, to be able to, uh, to get them plugged in as, as quickly as possible, um, as we're, as we're moving forward. So I think one of the trickier things, um, is going to be not, for families, is not being able to provide some of that, um, supervision, um, when we're in that hybrid model, um, because of the fact that we're going to need that square footage for classrooms. Um, so that, that's some of the thing that we'll really need to continue to, um, communicate as we're moving throughout, um, September and, and October, uh, to make sure families, um, have plans for that as we're, as we're moving, moving into it.
Okay.
Have you been, I, just to follow up on what Emily just said, so the families understand that, that the childcare, the families that are receiving and the teachers, right, who are also accessing the childcare right now, understand that that only is available in a 100% virtual model?
So it's been communicated, candid as such, yes. So we'll continue to communicate that, um, as we're, as we're moving forward. And it's, yeah, it's just one of the, one of the awkward dynamics of where we're at and we wanted to be able to provide as much support for as long as we could. Um, but the reality for, for Shorewood students, for example, if we move into a hybrid model, it's going to be three days of, still have three days of virtual, um, and if you're relying on the supervision, you know, you'd go from, you know, five, uh, days of coverage to be able to just, you know, have, uh, you'd have three that you would need to get covered yet. So basically have, you'd have two covered because your students would be going to two, two classes during those two days. Um, so, yeah, it's a difficult, difficult situation that is, again, happening in every district that's not fully face to face.
Okay. Um, all right, any other questions about this update? Okay, we'll hear back, uh, from you at the, I'm sure, at the next meeting. Um, all right, so a draft policy for six, for sick child, uh, or for sick children? So, um, is this a new policy, um, or is it an amendment to our old policy?
No, so this is, this was something new. This is something that we had off of the, um, that was in the school reopening plan. Um, and, uh, so just bringing this for our, our situation specific to, uh, to COVID, between this and, and the next, uh, agenda item regarding, uh, uh, face coverings.
Okay, do people have questions about, uh, this, uh, draft?
I just had one, I thought, I thought at one point that diarrhea was also a COVID-like symptom as well in children. Is, did I misread that somewhere?
Uh, that, I, I'd have to check with, uh, with Kelly Barlow on that and see if that was on the list.
I just remember thinking this is really going to be hard to tell the difference in some cases.
Yeah.
So, uh, Brian, to your point, wait, let me see, to your point about, um, the, uh, poli-, so the policy around how long you have to be out once you've been, once you've had COVID contact or thought to have COVID or been tested, would that be a separate policy than this? This is kind of just defining what a sick child is and then the policy around how many days you would be quarantined or, uh, not allowed back on campus?
Yeah, I mean, those are really, those are really guidelines. I mean, if we wanted to make a policy on that, we could. I mean, those are really, that's direction coming from the North Shore Health Department. Um, and so, I mean, that, that's, that's basically the, you know, following their, their authority. So if we, if we wanted to do that, or if we wanted to outline it as part of this policy, I guess we, we could do that.
I mean, I just, I'm thinking about what you just said about other school districts having to deal with issues around contact tracing and then parents wanting to play sports and still showing up or, I think, making it clear. I mean, if, if and when we go back, I think we're going to have to have a lot of like explanation of like, so this is what the protocol is and like, you're not allowed to do these things on school grounds or whatever, be back in school for any of these reasons. So either it's a policy or some sort of, um, you know, like kind of just like explanation of like what the process looks like once you've been identified or if somebody in your classroom's been identified or, you know, all those kinds of scenarios.
Sure.
That's a great point, Prue, because I think some of this is boiled down to whether or not it's enforceable, actually legally, and whether we want to try to enforce it as a recommendation. So like, like isolation for a, a positive case can be mandated legally, that you isolate for 10 days and it can be enforced, but I don't know that a quarantine for 14 days can be without a positive case. You know what I'm saying? There's going to be, there's got to be nuances regarding that.
Yeah, there are. That's some of the conversations we're having at a superintendent level is because some districts are, are seeing parents just refusing or sending their kids. So what can we do? Um, I mean, we, we can ban people from school property. Uh, I mean, we have the authority over our, over our property, um, so not allowing kids to come to our property is, you know, within, within our rights. So, um, so that, you know, would be a, a drastic situation, um, but we, you know, we'd have the ability to do that. We certainly would want to work with the parents as much as possible to give them multiple chances to be able to, you know, support their students staying home. Um, but at the end of the day, um, you know, having a student that's positive, knowingly having a student that's positive in our school does not save, um, at the, at this point in time. So, um, yeah, so we can, um, uh, I can, uh, again, a lot of that was, was, uh, um, within our school reopening, uh, plan. So I can pull some sections that outline kind of what our protocols are and, um, and go from there, if that makes sense, as a separate.
Mm-hmm. I'm just thinking like when we, I mean, to Clark's point, like what's enforceable and what's not, like we can only manage what happens on our, on our, on school grounds. Um, but, um, okay, other questions about this policy, this draft policy? So is the plan to, uh, kind of finalize it and have it ready to go by the time we are reopen, we are moving into either a hybrid or full face to face model?
Yeah, I'd like to bring it back final, just bring it back to the next, um, the next board meeting. Um, I, I can show you kind of what the, what that final would look like, um, and then, uh, include the quarantine, either include the quarantine in here or include it separate and get some perspective from some other, other districts. Uh, but yeah, we, we'd want it ready to go by the time, certainly by the time we'd move to a hybrid and I think sooner the better, um, because we do have smaller groups of students that are coming in.
Sure.
Moving forward.
Okay. Um, and then the next policy is the proposed face covering policy. So questions or comments about that?
Brian, I'm just curious where the, this policy draft came from.
Uh, so that was part, um, part of the, uh, the school reopening work group.
Yeah, but not to this, not to this extent though, was it discussed in the school reopening work group? So I'm just curious, sort of, the draft language of it came from Alex and Joe or from, from?
Yeah, that's, that's where it was, from that, from the, from the work group. And, and from the work, the work group plan is where, where I took this draft from and just wanted to be able to bring it to you guys to have any further conversation that you have.
Yeah, just because as, you know, as it's written, it's saying that this is a policy that we, policy, this is, you know, I just, I thought it was curi-, I would, was trying to understand who wrote it. I'm also curious about the outside wearing of face coverings? And has the village amended what they had passed for, they have not, right, for outside coverings? So are we going a step further than what the village has passed by including the outside use of face coverings?
Yeah, I mean, as it's, as it's written there, um, yeah, but again, that's why I want to be able to bring this draft to see what you guys think of that. And any feedback that we have?
Yes, I'm okay. Oh, go ahead.
Oh, no, go ahead.
No, I was going to say, because I guess the way I read the outside is that it's required when you can't be six feet apart, which is, seems reasonable to me.
Yeah, except at recess or something along.
Right.
Anytime kids are outside.
Yeah. I mean, I guess I was imagining this like it for like organized spaces, not like recess. So I don't know.
Are you concerned, Hillary, that it would be too difficult for our kids to wear masks outside, like at the playground, if they're?
Not necessarily. I guess I just, um, I mean, look, I work at a university where it's expected to wear it all the time, no matter what, and outside, inside, everywhere, you know? But I do worry about when we send our kids back to school, that there's no downtime from wearing it. And I, that does concern me. I'm also concerned about them not having it on. So I'm not saying, you know, I am, I am concerned of all things. I guess when I read this though, I was just a little put off by the text of it without us having discussed this as a board more before having this draft in front of us. I appreciate the starting point. I just, I don't know.
Hey, I really apologize. This is Jennifer McIntosh and I was on the health and safety group and worked with Alex Fraser on this wording. This was the wording that was in place from the get-go. And I just want to clarify, I know Dr. Davis was not part of the small group discussion and Hillary, I know you were on the health and safety side of things, but you weren't in the subgroup that discussed this. Um, and yes, this was the original language and yes, it stemmed from the fact that like, uh, Peru says, being less than six feet apart, even if you're outside, is a way to transmit the coronavirus. So this policy was a policy that was drafted to keep all of our children safe.
So, thanks Jen. Can you, uh, listen, we can, um, I'm going to ask that people hold off on their public comment for a moment while the board discusses this, but thank you for that clarification.
I wasn't trying to public comment, I was just trying to give some context that Dr. Davis didn't know, so I apologize.
No, that's okay, fine, thank you.
No, and I appreciate that and I'm not, I'm, as I said, I'm not saying that I'm against this, I just, I do, I do have concerns, I guess. So I am interested in hearing, you know, more of the conversation.
No, just to, um, I totally understand what Hillary's saying, totally understand, um, what she's saying, just kind of like the wording, it just like seems, um, just like for outdoor, it's sometimes that's where, you know, people don't, you know, kids are going to take off their mask, so it's kind of, you know, a hard thing of how are you going to, in a way, police that if you have to, but, um, you know, and what schools maybe that, I don't know if we can do this, but the, um, rules could be different for different school, just for different grades. I mean, you know, how kids are, you know, how much you can trust them, um.
Really terrible.
Uh, this is, I, I would, um, I, I, I guess without reading, I mean, the wording over again to see how it makes me feel, um, as a parent, as someone who is, you know, still has COVID antibodies, which is pretty cool, five months later, I'm still worried about contracting it and, and even more worried about transmitting it. Um, and I've appreciated kind of the efforts that the mask up folks in our community have done, you know, to, to, to encourage our village board to, to pass some ordinances, um, and really lead the state and our region and some of the things. And I, I, I wish we were in school. I, I wish we didn't have to wear masks. I wish I could mountain bike with a mountain bike team and, and not have to wear masks, but we're, we're able to do it and it, it stinks. It's, it's not ideal. And my fifth grader hates it. But it's, it's, at the end of the day, this is, this is like a community effort and, um, you know, had the chance to hear Dr. McIntosh and her husband present to the village board a brilliant presentation on, on, on the value of masks. Um, I guess I would rather err on the side of caution to be overly protective, um, because six feet becomes four feet, becomes two feet and, you know, um, my own children who, like, this whole concept of six feet is like 10 inches to a lot of people. Like people don't really know what six feet is. And instead of policing the distance, I think it's just easier to just have, like this stinks, we're going to get through it, but we're, this is part of being a community. I hate masks. Um, I'm a very social person. And, yeah, I, I'm, 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 I'm okay with it, is what I'm saying.
So I appreciate that and I also appreciate, you know, uh, Jen filling in on like where this came from, um, and I don't disagree that ma- uh, Jen filling in on like where this came from. Um, and I don't disagree that masks are an important, uh, barrier to COVID. I do worry though, as a district about our, a policy like this then and how we, uh, enforce it. Um, and who's getting in trouble on the playground and, you know, like how much time teachers are spending on enforcing mask coverings versus teaching students. Um, and like the benefit, um, I think it's, I think it's easier and I think there's things that are easier to enforce than others. And like, I think it's, so I, I see what Hillary's coming from, especially when outside we, I think is, you know, like, I think there's, I don't know, I would, I would argue that the, the data on the out, like outside transmission is more complicated maybe. Or at least there's more variability and like depending on what you read. Um, so, you know, I think that's the other piece of that and, um, I do think the village is going to move forward with that. To, to your point Hillary, I mean, I think their plan is to move forward with the, this exact same requirement, face coverings are required when you're not six feet apart. Not like if you're just outside by yourself. Um, but, um, you know, I think it, um, it puts a burden on the person who's responsible for monitoring this. So it's not just, I mean, in a school setting that, that falls on certain teachers and then it could potentially fall on certain students. So I think that's just something else for us to consider and.
Could we maybe hear, given like evidence is changing so fast, maybe, are we actually, maybe a clarifying question, Brian, are, is the board actually gonna be adopting this eventually?
So typically like this would fall under like a district policy. So
Okay, that's what I thought.
Yeah, just provide to you. I was, you know, certainly wanted to be able to get your feedback and perspective.
Yeah, I mean, I access, you know, the rationale for, um, outdoor mask wearing and under certain scenarios. And then, um, my only question was actually gonna be about, um, like the type of covering. I know. So, um, as an aside, like Little League was really wearing, using the kind of buff style masks that are like a gator. And then there was like some research that was scary saying like those don't work at all. But then some contradictory or so. I, I, I guess my thought is like, I would, I would just like to hear from, um, the health department as far as what the latest research shows in terms of, because maybe we should specify like what kind is acceptable. Like if we, if we're not okay with kids taking a bandana or something indoor similar, um, we might want to be more specific so that we don't have to shame anybody in the middle of the school day. Like the expectation is clear. Um, that was my only thought. So, but again, like I, I think if we're following what the health department says, the latest research is, that's what we should be doing.
We actually have masks for all the students, correct?
Yeah, each, each student would have two and then we'll have this, we'll have masks that would be available as they
Okay, okay.
Not bringing them.
So we're, are we specifically asking them not to bring any from home?
Uh, we have not, no. At this point.
We need to supply more than two though, if we're saying you can't bring any from home, right? But I think Emily, to your point about it being effective, right? That we want masks that are effective. We want the usage of them to be effective. Um, I guess Brian, if, if the board's not approving this, if this is not a board vote to approve this policy, I think some of the language just needs to be changed in the draft policy, cause it does give the impression that the board has passed this policy. Um, so I guess that was part of my question about the drafting of it and just the, where it came from. Um, and I do want to, I think, um, be clear and Emily, you just made this point and I want to echo it, cause I think this also raises some of my concerns. That if we get to a point that we are, I don't want to be blaming people or shaming people, particularly children in this manner. I guess that's what sort of made me uncomfortable and I, I want to be a leader in this Pablo. I do, you know, it's not like I'm trying to be like a denier or anything like that. But I just want it to be smart and, and effective. I don't want to be shaming kids. I don't want to be creating a database of kids that haven't been wearing it or to shame people. That makes me uncomfortable. So however, however this is done, I want it to be done in a caring way. I think the way the district has been encouraging and enforcing mask use through the pickups and through attending school and all those things is, is good. I think we need to keep doing that. That's the right thing to do. So I just want us to be very mindful about how we're, um, I guess putting a policy together and putting it out there. And that's, that was what I was trying to get across.
Sure. And that'll, that'll be part of our information sharing when we get to, uh, talking with staff specifically. Um, that as, eventually people will fall short of what our expectations are. How are we, you know, providing that, uh, education? How are we providing the equipment? Um, again, bottom line is we want to make sure that people are staying safe and feel like it's a nurturing environment where they're included and continue to be engaged. So.
All right. Just one more quick question on that, on the section where it's talking about, um, when you can't be six feet apart. It says, in all cases where a face coverings cannot be worn and social distancing cannot be maintained, alternative methods must be utilized to limit potential transmission of COVID. What are some of those alternative methods that we'd be referencing there? I'm just not sure. If we don't know what those are, we probably don't read that language.
Yeah, we could outline those. We need to.
Cause that might also impact the actual enforcement of the mask wearing, right, outside.
Correct, yep.
It might be easier, it might be easier for us to come to an understanding of what all that means.
Sure. Yeah, these are all, this is exactly why I wanted to be able to bring this, to be able to talk through, talk through all these things and work through it.
So you'll be bringing this back also next time?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, okay, so public comments number two. Um, if you're interested and you've called in, um, it's star six, if I remember correctly, and how to unmute yourself. Um, otherwise you just unmute yourself on your computer.
Hello?
Hello? Yep, we can hear you.
Hi. Hi, this is Julie Warnke from forty-fourth fifty-two Ardmore. Uh, I had a couple of questions and comments. So the first one I wrote down is that I wonder, you know, you were discussing about the timing of the town hall meetings. And I wonder if it's possible to schedule some of them at a time other than right before the board meeting, just because for some people, six o'clock is just, you know, people are just wrapping up work, they're having dinner with their families. It's just not a convenient time. So just wanted to say that. Um, I agree that, um, Principal Roscoe's meeting was really lovely and I liked the idea of extending, um, the offer for students to provide feedback to the board, to younger students. I think that would be a fun meeting frankly. Um, I also, when I, I had written before we got to the place in the, um, discussion about the face mask policy, that I had some questions about it. One of those questions is, um, about saying that one of the exceptions would be PE class. And while I completely understand it, it seems like PE class would be a time where students would be, would be likely to be, um, closer than six feet apart, maybe not. And then they're going to be exerting themselves. So potentially six feet isn't the standard any longer. And you know, I'm not an expert in that arena, but it just stood out to me as something that maybe is worth thinking about. Um, another thing I was thinking about when you were discussing, you know, the decision making about, um, returning to school on the ninth was, you know, the date October thirteenth. And again, I'm not an expert, but I've been paying attention. And if you look at the graph like on the North Shore Health Department website and elsewhere, a lot changes in four weeks. And so basically a decision would be made on the thirteenth, which was this one day shy of four weeks before the next, the next kind of date for reopening. And I, I totally get an understanding idea that, you know, it gets, you know, there's more advance notice, et cetera. Um, but it feels like it might be a little too, in this context, it might be a little too early. And I think it might be a little too early, not just because it's, um, you know, four weeks out, but also because, um, my, my husband's work, they had a NASTIC, they hired a consultant to come in and help them with their, um, COVID planning. And this individual said that almost all the experts believe there's gonna be a spike in the fall. And the spike would be later, um, in their estimates. The spike time would be later than, um, later. So I can't remember the date, but I think it was sometime in November. And so it just seems like we might be just making a decision a little bit too soon. But I guess there's no perfect date, but I'm just gonna put that out there. Um, especially because Halloween's in there and, you know, there's a potential for something to kind of happen around Halloween as well. Um, and like Pablo expressed, I'm in support of the face coverings outside. Um, I think it just makes sense, um, given what the science is saying about, um, what is, is most safe. And, um, I also want to express that I think it would be important to be flexible about allowing children to bring masks from home. Because if they wear masks that are more comfortable for them and fit them better, they're more likely to wear them without distress or distraction, um, or without any other kind of disruption. Um, that's all I have to say.
Thanks Julie.
You're welcome.
Um, the number ending in seven eight? Five one seven?
Hi, yeah, this is Brady McIntosh. Um, we, uh, I'm one of the emergency medicine doctors in our community. We live at forty-four thirty-six, uh, Prospect Avenue. Um, just wanted to kind of address the discussion before about limiting our scope to just our community. Um, I think that, um, is potentially dangerous because of course, the people in our community travel throughout Milwaukee County and throughout the state. And we can't just, uh, just focus on what's happening within our neighborhood and within our, within our community with this virus. This passes through county lines, it passes through state lines. So we really need to, uh, to keep an eye on what's going on in our county and in our state and just across the country as well to try to be flexible and, and make decisions, uh, as far as what's safe for our students and our teachers and our administrators who are gonna be in contact with this. Um, and I also wanted to, uh, um, agree with the previous commenter on the concern for making an exception for masks for gym class. Uh, as we, as we know now, um, this virus is transmitted through droplet, um, aerosolization and uh, heavy breathing and close contact are a perfect environment for things to spread through droplets. So, um, being unmasked while running around in gym class and, uh, and playing close together, that's a perfect way for things to pass from person to person. Uh, so making an exception for gym class, uh, would kind of defeat the entire purpose of having masks, uh, in school to begin with. So uh, I, I agree with that, uh, with the previous commenter that, um, masks, uh, during gym class should be enforced. Um, even though that's uncomfortable and, and you know, as, as been previously said, nobody likes masks. Nobody wants to be wearing masks. Uh, but they're, they're, the, the simplest and most effective thing that we can do for public safety. And they really, really are effective. So, uh, I hope we would be enforcing that, uh, that minimal standard, uh, to keep all of our children and our teachers safe.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Hi, this is Julie Warnke again. I apologize for, I just forgot something I wanted to say about the October thirteenth decision date. I wanted to add that. The other thing is, my understanding is that, um, the, the date for head count, is that the third Friday in October?
In September.
The third Friday.
Oh, is it?
Of September?
Yeah.
Well then, never mind. I have nothing more to say. All right.
Thanks Julie. Um, the nu, the phone number ending in three nine?
Yes, hi, this is Tracy Clark. I'm at four one four four North Larkin Street. I, uh, had a, a brief comment, uh, earlier there was discussions also about the sprinkler systems that are being installed at Lake Bluff and Antwater. And I just wanted to double check. I'm not sure if I missed the information. Um, but will that leave some of our facilities in the middle school and in the high school without sprinklers? Or is the plan for the entire district to have sprinklers be installed at this time? With the reconstruction?
So Brian, can you a, answer that question about sprinklers?
Yeah, so all, all of our, uh, all of our renovated spaces would have sprinklers. I'd have to check to see if that is complete, if that completes it across the district. I, I believe it does. I'd have to double check, um, with, uh, with our facilities maintenance, uh, personnel and I can get back to you on that Tracy.
Okay, thank you. I just want to reiterate that I think that, I believe the terminology that was being used prior was of fully sprinkling, uh, the building's entirety. And I think that, um, I, I really appreciate Lake Bluff and Antwater. I think they're our most vulnerable population as far as evacuations go. But, uh, when it comes to fire safety, I don't think that any student should, um, whether it's intermediate or high school, should be left without that basic, um, twenty-first century technology. And we have the opportunity to do that as we're going through this massive renovation. So I hope that that will, um, be considered so that we, as a district, we can say that we have met those standards. Even if we're previously grandfathered that, that we're providing that safety and, and, and showing that stewardship for the future generations that are coming. Like that, I just feel like that's the central part. Um, I know that we're having a lot of conversations about COVID and right now as well. And I think that's all important and, um, appreciate the comments that were said. Um, but I just want to also not lose tact of that longer-term opportunity that we have as well.
Agreed. Thank you Tracy. Any other public comment? There should, there will be one more opportunity at the end of the meeting as well. Um, all right. So hearing none right now, I'm gonna go ahead and move forward on the agenda. And again, there'll be one more opportunity for public comment, hopefully in about thirty minutes. Um, so board governance, uh, the first, uh, report on here is from myself and Clark about, uh, proposed change to our results policy two. Um, I provided a summary of kind of, uh, the conversations Clark and I had about this and what we based it on. And then the old, uh, or the current results two policy and our proposed results policy. So, um, open to questions or comments? Yeah, Emily?
Uh, I was just gonna say, I, I think, um, I'm supportive of changing the policy to reflect growth rather than mastery, as you know. Simplifying. Simplifying, which I think it does, so.
Emily, could you uh?
Say it one more time, you you cut out in the middle.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, uh supportive of the move to growth over mastery and then uh supportive of simplifying. Just.
What do you think, Pablo?
I I concur with Emily and with the work you two did.
So um the, as you guys know, FastBridge is the um assessment we'll be using this year. Actually, Brian, when will that first assessment be given?
Um, we're on track for probably early October. Uh, we've got some training that we need to do with staff, so.
Okay, um, and um, so we would be able to so I'd have to bring this back to the next board meeting for official approval. Um, but then we would be on track to use FastBridge and other. I think the piece that's not in here yet is the indicators from yourself and Sam and Julie on and interpretations of the policy. So we would need to bring that back as well um for board approval. Um, but we would be able to do, use some of these um for this upcoming year. Okay.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Clark?
Are both of the proposed and the required listed? Sorry. I was just clicking on them. Maybe it's my mistake. Oh, I see it, okay.
Oh, actually, I don't think the, um, oh, so I think, because I used um track changes. It's not here, so, sorry. They're the same.
Yeah, the summary is correct.
Yes, uh, I, yeah, the track changes are not on, like, noted on here, so I'll have to resend it to you.
If you check your email, Clark, it should be.
Yeah, I sent it in an email as well.
The right ones are in the email. That's what I pulled up, actually. It was faster.
I was just trying to point it out because I know what they say.
Oh, right, yeah.
Well, when I look at the materials posted, they look the same, and I just wanted to clarify in case people noticed.
Thanks for catching.
Yeah.
Okay, so um, yeah, thanks, Clark. And I will uh put the correct one in there in board books for uh if other people are interested in looking at it. Um, so for next time, Brian, if you could come back with interpretations and indicators. Um, and then I will make sure all the um, the language in here is correct.
That sounds good, yeah. I'll work with Sam and Julie on uh on completing that.
Okay, great. Um, okay, um, I had on here board workshops, but I feel like uh we well, you you saw where they are on the agenda for next or for on the work plan. So I want to just confirm from you guys what uh we're doing next time, which is next week, Wednesday at six o'clock. Um, uh, having a workshop on the budgeting and kind of preparing for our final board vote on the budget in October. And so um Emily, you've sent some questions, are there, and some other questions have come up um about, from the annual meeting. Um, but so what I asked um Roger to really focus on is the assumptions that go into our budgeting process and making sure that we as a board agree on those assumptions and where they come from. Um, and update on the enrollment numbers so that we have like the most up to date as of next week uh numbers. And then um, you know, the the formula then that we're going to use going forward then for that to get us to the levy. Um, are there other things that you'd like him to focus on?
I think those are all good topics, Peru. Thank you for putting those together.
And when when he talks about the mill, the mill rate, um, will he cover also um what it meant at the annual meeting, the result of that?
Yeah, like what the decision, the discussion was around the mill rate, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Um, all right, so we've tabled the legislative advocacy ad hoc work group. Um, Emily, do you have an update on the school board representative applications?
Sure, we have had a handful of applications already, and um the deadline is Friday. I'd expect that uh like every sophomore and junior in high school, we'd probably get some right at the deadline, so um, that's how I used to roll, so, uh, maybe still. Uh, and um, we have used a couple of different ways to kind of get the word out, but um if anyone has others to add, um Sadie and Jack have been helpful as well in in that um regard. And then um, uh, Jack and Sadie also volunteered to be part of the interviews, which I think would be great as long as they can fit it in their schedule. Um, and uh, and so Pablo and I will interview with their help. I'll probably ask, uh, last year, Tim Kenny came to ones where he was available, I, you know, so that's super helpful. Um, hopefully we can make schedules align and and do that. Folks have questions, I can answer those.
Can I, uh, uh, by having Jack and Sadie participate in the interviews, are they not resubmitting applications to be on it again? Did we have that conversation before about them reapplying and being part of it? Is that, was the decision made that they were not doing that?
We talked through it and decided they didn't have to reapply, that they would just like be invited to stay.
For the whole year?
Yeah.
Was that the discussion that we had?
Mm-hmm, that's what I remember.
Okay. As I said, I might be losing it, so that's fine. I just.
I have to go back and look myself, to be honest. I had to go back and and listen to our conversation because I forgot and looked at our notes, and that's what we we settled on because we just felt like it would be weird and so.
So the addition would be for one student.
Yeah.
Yeah.
To learn the ropes from Jack and Sadie in
And then.
completion of.
Right, and then the follow. This year will be unusual, and there would be like three students, but in the future it'd just be two.
Okay, fabulous.
Is there a way we can get Mr. Kenny or somebody else to do one of his his um videos promoting it perhaps?
I know, yeah, I know he sent an email.
Best idea I've heard all night.
Oh.
Gee, Jack. I'm sure he could come up with something pretty creative to.
I'm sure.
All right, I'll ask him. Or you want to ask him, Jack? You see him where?
I thought Jack volunteered to do the video.
That's actually the best idea I've heard all night, is have Jack follow up with Mr. Kenny.
Thanks, Jack.
So can I ask what the plan is for uh start date?
Um, I have it in our drive. I think it was the second, so it was like if we bring a recommendation. Yeah, we'd rec, we'd bring you guys a recommendation the twenty-second.
Okay.
Then they would start then, yeah, in October.
Okay. Thanks, looking forward to it.
Me too.
Um, and then some organizational reports. So Clark, do you have an HRC update?
Can you hear me?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, good. My headphones open up again. Um, actually, the next HRC is this Thursday, so I don't have an update um based on, I think, changing from the last time. Other than I did share with you uh the agenda for uh the upcoming meeting, and that's where the subcommittees will be talking about those items that are in that agenda, about suggestions for action items that came out of the community discussion to some extent, but also that they built upon in the weeks subsequent to that. And I would say that the education and policy one are probably the most relevant to us.
Can I ask, Clark, because Clark, you and Pablo have been switching off, right, for that liaison position, or now you are just it. I will, my purpose of asking this question was on one of, as I was looking at one of the meeting minutes.
Mm-hmm.
We had three board members at it, and I'm wondering if that was noted or if you guys are communicating, if more than one of you are going, so that we are properly not in violation by having three board members at a meeting that would be relevant to said roles. I just want us to be kind of aligned.
Yeah, we have to be communicating that. I wasn't aware, I don't recall, would you know which meeting that was?
Oh, now you got me. I don't know. It was one of the minutes, there was, and it wasn't the one, it wasn't the community one that we were kind of all there, and that one was noticed. But I think there was.
An HRC?
Yeah, there was one where you came late, Clark, and I covered for you, but we were, it was just the two of us.
So.
We might have even noticed that, just in case, but.
Yeah, and you were covering for me, but I jumped on real quick, introduced and then left, right? Or did I, was the other way around?
I don't know, and whatever, I'm sorry, I should have written the date down of whatever minutes it was that I saw was what made me think of it.
We have noticed it before, though, so I'm not sure if it was the same one, but we'll try to just be, I haven't joined since the forum.
It's always supposed to be me. I just asked for her to help me. One time I couldn't make it.
Yeah.
I haven't been on there since their forum, so.
So then looking at, and then my other question was just looking at the agenda and how many school-related things there are. Um, how, Clark, other than you being the liaison, is some of that going to be communicated? Um, because there, you know, there's all good conversations, but I just, I was noticing there's quite a bit of stuff that is in our wheelhouse.
Right, and that's part of the question, those are the part of the questions I'm going to be having with them because that's the first time they're going to be talking about it is on Thursday. So these subcommittee, these subcommittees go and they they have their meetings separately, and they came up with these recommendations to get to Tyler so that we can talk, they could talk about it as a group about those ideas. Um, and then part of the discussion is going to be is how do you go about trying to implement some of those, if that's where you're going to go? That was my understanding of it, because I had the same question you did, particularly on the one um regarding air mark.
Yeah, well, that one and just kind of all of them, because they're all things that we've been talking about and the district's been talking about. And so I, you know, I don't want us to, uh, I just, just so that there's clear communication and role responsibility, I guess, is what I was sort of curious about.
And I will have clarification of that because I definitely don't want to be the only one in those conversations, of course. I think we need to have two people there at least.
Well, and that some of those conversations are are more advisory in nature, right? Those aren't decisions that are made in that subcommittee.
Right, correct.
Yes, okay.
Pablo, did you have a question?
No, not about uh the HRC, no.
Okay. See, uh, so Clark, I'll put it on for the next agenda for you to give us an update then.
Yes.
Okay. Um, all right, Pablo, do you have a SWAS update?
Yeah, we didn't have our typical monthly meeting this morning. I think it was probably due to everyone getting started back up. And uh, we did meet, as we've alluded to throughout tonight's meeting, um with our peer districts uh and board members. Um, and got a little bit about, you know, gating criteria, what other districts are using. Um, and and just kind of hearing, hearing from other districts, hearing from our neighbors to the north, hearing from, you know, the Waukesha's and the Menominee Falls and how things are going. We got a little bit of a uh very cursory legislative update. Um, but the big thing I think that I took away was, um, well, a couple, you know, anecdotes. One was um from the Oak Creek Franklin School District that that opted to go virtual like we did and and uh, you know, a friend um of, you know, one of the board member's friends had opted to go to a private school and and a first grade teacher quit early on, and the kids were just sent home. Um, and there's no plan for replacement. Um, and the other thing that I just took notes on that, the other thing that jumped out at me was just the importance of of communicating to the public and and that I don't know if it'd be good for us um or for Caitlin to help put together some kind of weekly video message. I think we're all um infinite campus overwhelmed uh with emails, but getting some kind of weekly video message with updates on 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 gating criteria, on the schools reopening, on, you know, all the amazing things that happened uh today. Um, I think there's, it 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 might be helpful instead of just F A Q. So that was one of the ideas that came from one of the other districts, um and I thought that would be interesting. Um, and we'll have more meetings um coming up. I'll have more to update you on, probably than the the first meeting in October.
Are they still doing the uh meetings with Children's Hospital?
Yep.
Okay.
They still are, and the next one's going to be on, um, well, Terry, uh, our director is meeting with them on the fifteenth. Um, and then will be kind of reporting back to us on on that, so she's been working with childrens. Terry's executive director of SWAS.
Okay, thanks, Pablo. Um, and then Emily, do you have anything from short moving forward?
No, unless uh someone else has spotted anything, they haven't had a, what they call the community meeting, where it's like everybody's invited um since my last update, so.
Okay. All right, um, so a review of to-do items, Brian?
All right, um, so work with Katie and and bring back that legislative ad hoc committee to the next meeting. And some Pablo had on this one. Um, touch base with Ann Christensen just around testing sites, see if there's anything we can do to help facilitate that as we're moving forward. Um, work on the uh from a policy standpoint with the sick child policy, um taking a look at um a complimentary policy or an inclusion there regarding quarantine rules and kind of outline of that. Um, and then also uh working on some of the um, some of the improvements that were mentioned tonight related to the mask policy. Uh, based on some of the comments from the board and public comments also. Um, and then I will work with uh Sam and Julie before the next meeting to get um indicators, um interpretations and indicators for uh R two uh for some of the changes that were made tonight, um and bring those back at the next meeting.
Great, thanks. Um, so I think the two immediate things that I need to work on are setting up a um, two student linkages. So I think, are we, um, you know, I know the six o'clock time period might be complicated, but we'll try to do that at least one more time and do that with K through six students for our next meeting, and then work with Jack and Sadie on a different one for high school and SIS, is what I heard. Um, and then the second thing that I want to do is think about having a meeting, a workshop with the board that's not about a particular uh OE, but about uh just our process for OEs and monitoring and compliance and non-compliance. So um coming up with a date for us to do that. And, um, yeah, was there anything else? I had some questions that I got, Brian, and during the town hall that I'll follow up with you on.
Right.
As well.
I'll also follow up on the sprinkler, the question that Tracy had just related to the sprinklers.
Great. Um, and then are there uh future agenda items that people would like for me to know about? Okay, well, if you come up with something, let me know. Um, all right, and then opportunity for public comment number three. Uh, star six to unmute yourself. Okay, uh, well, you're welcome to always send us an email um if you have questions or comments. Um, I know it's probably for most people been a really long day, um, getting up early to for the first day of school. So I appreciate all of you sticking with us uh through this evening. Um, and we will be back here for our um, our next meeting in two weeks. And then next Wednesday again is our special workshop on the budget, which will be uh, there'll be a public notice about it, so you're welcome to attend that as well. So thanks and um have a good. So you're welcome to attend that as well. So thanks, and, um, have a good rest of your evening. And I'll go ahead and call this meeting into recess.